If I could have your attention, please. I'd like to welcome you to our December 12th, 2019 City Council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I call this council meeting to order. This time, we'll begin with our invocation by Pastor Jay McCag from Crossroads Baptist Church. Thank you again. Could we all stand together and remain standing for the pledge?
Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, we thank you for the privilege that you've given us to be here tonight. We thank you for this gift of this country. We thank you for the gift of civil government, Father, where we're able to make decisions and hear from each person. Father, we pray that everything done tonight will be done rightly and in order. Father, we pray that each person, each person on our council, each person in this room, each person in this city that desires to see change would turn from their sinfulness, would seek after you, to look to your face, Father, and humble themselves before you. And, Father, we pray that we can move forward together without strife, without controversy, Father. Father, we just pray that everything that's done here tonight will bring honor and glory to you. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we be seated. Madam Clerk, we please call the roll.
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
First, tonight, we have a presentation for Employee of the Month. And who will be making that? Amway? I think it's Parks and Rec.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to ask Gabriel Amonte to come up here with me. He's our natural resources supervisor, and actually, he will be giving the presentation.
Thank you, Stephanie. Ron is an exemplary staff member who works diligently throughout the year, making sure the city of St. Cloud is beautiful. Besides Ron always executing high-quality jobs, every day, he went above and beyond the call of duty on Friday, October 25th, 2019, when there was an elderly man who was taken to an emergency room around the city's community garden located at 802 New York. But he had to leave his dog behind, unfortunately. Ron, being a thoughtful individual he is, volunteered to take care of the dog until the man returned from the ER. Unfortunately, the man was too sick to bear to be responsible for the dog, so Ron has since taken care of the dog with his own family. The Parks and Recreation Department is proud to have him of the team and part of the city. Thank you.
If you'd like to say something first?
I just want to thank everybody. Gabriel, thank you, bud.
Thank you, Ron.
Goodbye.
Thanks, man. Thank you for going the extra mile. That's what you call going the second mile. Thank you, Ron. We're certainly appreciative for all that you do. At this time, we have a presentation. We're going to turn the podium around, and then we'll ask Brent Burish of the St. Cloud Regional Medical Center to come and make a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Brent Burish. I'm the CEO at St. Cloud Regional Medical Center. And this really is addressed to the entire audience, not just the city council members, but thank you, Mr. Mayor, the council members, Mr. Surgeon, for allowing us to speak tonight for a few minutes to represent an update on the hospital, where we are. Obviously, many of you have seen the construction project underway on 192, but more who we are, and ultimately, share a little bit about our story. So, the hospital, if you're not familiar, now has grown to be 535 total team members. We've added about 100 positions in the last six years, and we're told that outside of the city, we're the largest employer in St. Cloud. We have 416 full-time staff members, and roughly half of them live here in St. Cloud. So, as we've grown and the city has grown, we've attracted more and more people. In the last three months, we've had three job fairs at the hospital. Over 100 people have shown up wanting a job with St. Cloud Regional Medical Center, which is a great testament, not just to our hospital, but also to the community, that people want to work here, both locally and now attracting from nearby communities. We have over 40 contract staff members and a medical staff of doctors, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, that now exceeds 300 credentialed providers as well, many of whom trained seven to 10 years in their specialties, who are dedicated to providing care in St. Cloud. 24 volunteer auxiliary members, that does not count teen volunteers who serve at our facility, 30 senior circle members, 26 departments, and we passed out, for those in the audience and anyone who may want it, a one-page summary, a community benefit sheet. We're in, last year, we calculated it, over $19.5 million in charity or uncompensated care to this community. So, we are you. We are the city of St. Cloud, and truly, the hospital belongs to this community. Earlier this year, the city was nice in providing a proclamation for National Hospital Week and National Nurses Week. This is some of the celebrations that we did. We also had a chance to celebrate with EMS and first responders. National EMS Week is during the same month, so May is really a party month for everybody in a hospital. But so you all can see the appreciation within the facility. Thank you for recognizing us. We have your proclamations posted when you walk in the hospital, and it's wonderful to have the collaboration with the city as a part of it. One of the things we want to talk about is our retention. I've been privileged to be the CEO for about five and a half years now at the hospital. And when I first got here, one of the biggest concerns was we were turning over staff quite a bit. What you can see is a four-year progression. We're in, our turnover rate has dropped by about 33% at the hospital, and we're now well better than most hospitals in the industry in keeping and retaining staff. Not just all of our staff, but also the highest wage earners that we have, nurses, pharmacists, and some of the more specialty medical-trained employees. Last year, we expanded the hospital. The city was a part of the Chamber of Commerce as well, in joining a ribbon-cutting we had in September 2018 when we opened a new emergency department, new entrance. We also asked the community, including a women's advisory group that we have, to help us come up with a new mission statement. As the hospital expanded for the first time in over 20 years, it was time for us to expand and update our mission statement. And deliberately, we changed it to put "safety" first. It's to provide safe, personalized, and accessible health care to St. Cloud and the surrounding communities. If you look at our vision and our values, they are in order of priority, and for the public, what you'll notice is safety and quality is first. You don't just have to take a CEO's word for it. You can go online to hospitalcompare.gov and compare any two hospitals in the United States you want to, and I would proudly tell you that our safety scores are among the best in all of central Florida, not just Osceola County. We're not perfect. There's more that we'll improve, but I'm very proud of our organization and the care and the outcomes that we provide as an organization. Again, what you have on this one-page sheet that we've passed out, and there's more copies for those that may want it, is a summary of how we've invested in this community. It's capital dollars, it's recruitment of specialties in, it's caring for our community, but ultimately, it's taking care of you all, every single day during emergency times. Our chief of staff is a cardiologist who's going to come speak tonight. He is in our cath lab helping stent a patient right now who came in the emergency department a couple hours ago. About a year and a half ago, that patient would have had to be transferred out of St. Cloud, restart all of their consultants, go somewhere else with higher costs, and they're now being provided care locally at an accredited institution with very good outcomes. And he apologizes for missing, but he's in the right place. So, with that, these are the accreditation bodies. I'm often asked, who oversees the hospital? Who oversees the facility? This is the answer. Excuse me. So, we now have 11 accreditations, two that are new this year, including becoming a primary stroke center with the Agency of Healthcare Administration, the state of Florida, an accredited chest pain center, multiple accreditations, whether it's lab with joint commission, the full hospital, or with the American College of Radiology. These don't happen by accident. They don't happen easily. Our wound care center is a recognized center of excellence and has been for six years consecutively. And again, it speaks to the quality of care and ultimately, the team that provides care at the hospital. When you talk about who's responsible, I'll introduce our board in a minute. We also have, among those 300 providers, 21 medical staff leaders. These are all physicians, again, all of whom, between medical school, residency, fellowship, trained a minimum of seven years, many of them more, who in their fields are dedicated to improving and leading the care in this community. 21 physicians who take time, all of it basically free time that they provide, and they spend a lot of time with us. We had a 7:00 AM meeting this morning for two hours, making sure we credential the right providers in the future into our facility with appropriate backgrounds and training. With that, to highlight, over a one-year period, we brought in over 40 new physicians to the community, in addition to adding telemedicine services to help support our stroke program, so that if you come to our hospital with a stroke, you have a 15-minute response, whether in person or now by electronics, for a neurologist to do an assessment of your, and help provide care. With these, I know there's an economic impact, but more importantly, it's that access to care, part of the mission statement that we updated last year, so patients can stay local, have high-quality care, have affordable care, and have care that's provided in a timely manner. So, these are physicians that came to the community, many of whom reside here or near here, their families do as well. And as our hospital continues to expand, these are the types of high-quality individuals who are joining us and providing care to you, the entire community. We also have a local board of trustees. When we say the hospital belongs to the community, these are appointed or elected positions. It includes physicians, it includes community members, it includes attorneys, bankers, civic leaders here in the organization. And we invited Carol Greenwald, who is a former psychologist and now a realtor here locally, who is the moderator of our board this year, to say a few words as well.
This is awkward. I've got my back this afternoon. If I put my back to you all, I'm ignoring you, but if you don't mind, I'm going to stand this way, is alright?
The problem is, you need to speak into the mic regardless.
How's this? Is this good? Alright. I'm like Ethel Merman. You could probably hear me without a microphone, but we'll stay with the microphone. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about St. Cloud. I'm on the board. I've been on the board for five years. I've been a resident of this area for nine years, coming down from the metropolitan, mid-Atlantic area. And so, one of the first things I heard about St. Cloud Hospital was, "You don't want to go there." And I would imagine some of you have heard that yourselves. But I'm happy to tell you now that I hear so many comments from my friends talking about what a great experience they've had at the hospital. Needless to say, that makes me happy. But what caused the change? Safety. Every meeting that I go to in the hospital, and as chair of the board of trustees, I'm privileged to attend more than just the trustees' meetings, but every single meeting, every agenda starts out with "Safety Moment." And I really didn't pay a lot of attention to the importance of that until Brent shared with me an article about the health care in hospitals. And it talked about 20 years ago, there was a report that cited that hospitals need to spend more time and more attention to patient safety. And then this recent article came out and wanted to compare, "Has it happened?" Because the initial goal was, 20 years ago, that in five years, they could reduce by 50% some of the accidents. And so, the article came out and said, "Hasn't happened." It hasn't happened. And what they singularly pointed to was the CEO. And said it is the CEO that has the leadership, should have the leadership, to make the safety moment the priority. And I can assure you that, among other things, what Brent really focuses on is the safety moment. But it's not just Brent. I have been a patient in the hospital, and I watched what happened. And I know that every single day, at every single shift change, there is a discussion about safety. The old statement of, "Don't ever expect what you don't inspect." Well, it's St. Cloud. It is inspected a lot. And so, as you go around and you talk about the hospital, if some people have said, "Oh, let me tell you about the hospital," they're probably old like me, and they're telling you a story that happened years ago. Listen to the new stories, because it is something to be proud of. Knowing full well what we've got ahead of us, "we" meaning St. Cloud, we've got, as you well know, Osceola County is the fastest-growing county now in the nation, which is kind of scary. But it's here, and you folks know it, and we know it, but more importantly, the hospital knows it. And so, I can tell you with the utmost assurance that the hospital is ready and will always be ready. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A couple more things to conclude. If I can also invite the other board members tonight that joined us to stand and be recognized. Jack Vicente, Les Murdock, Lisa Thompson with EMS, Alden Weiss, again, a representation of the community who represent you all in meeting with us and the medical staff at the hospital. Thank you all for your service to the facility as well. Our partnerships and our dedication to the city goes beyond just care. It's also training the next generation. So, what we've listed here is some of the partnerships on the left of who we work with, including City of St. Cloud, Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, Osceola County Council on Aging, Community Vision, and others, but also the student partnerships. And I've highlighted in green, soon, we will be accepting medical students from University College of, University of Central Florida, in addition to the nursing students, pharmacy students, radiology students, and others that we have in the community. Again, our participation in giving back and helping train another generation and the next generation of caregivers. So, ultimately, I'm asked the why question, and this is my family during the construction breaking, so my children, who each proudly say they dug the hole for the building that's going up right now, and I say this is more responsible for my parenting, clearly not my wife's, but you can look at, my children have had three surgical procedures and four ER visits in five years at our hospital. Doesn't say a lot about me as a father, but what it does say is, I trust the hospital with my children's lives. I don't know any other way to say it, and I don't call ahead, I don't say who's working tonight. We go. We go automatically. And my children are treated, as I expect the whole community will be, with fantastic care. Why we do this? So, we're already in Hurricane Dorian. We're fortunate we didn't have to, but if you go back two years, during Hurricane Irma, we had 150 total staff members and nine physicians who spent 36 hours straight in the hospital. Didn't leave. We boarded up. We had people come in, and people came in the middle of a hurricane into the hospital, but they were dedicated to providing care to this community. And that is the type of people that work at our hospital, that are there to support you and support this community when they need to. So, going back to where we're going, very briefly, this was last year, when we had the groundbreaking and the ribbon-cutting for our new emergency department, our new entrance. With that, it allowed us to renovate majorities portion of the hospital this year. This is the ICU that we renovated this summer, the intensive care unit. When you can look at that asterisk on the bottom, every patient room has been renovated in the past five years in our hospital, as of this year. So, the next phase of growth, the construction project underway right now, is a new medical office building. It is a 50,000-square-foot building for outpatient or ambulatory care, with walk-in clinic, primary care. There'll be a retail pharmacy, a lab, imaging services, cardiologists, surgeons, specialists, and others, all in one central location to provide accessible, convenient care for patients in the appropriate setting. So, with that, again, thank you for the city for joining us. You can see some of the pictures of where it stood from an aerial shot about four weeks ago. And again, thank you for the time this evening in presenting.
And we would certainly like to express our deep appreciation for the hospital and all that it do. I can speak from personal experience from several months ago, having spent a week there, received excellent care, and I recommend their service. You do an excellent job. Thank Brent for your leadership and the board. At this time, we have a presentation by Community Vision, and I believe Donna Sines is going to do that.
Actually, I'm Sue Ring. I'm pinching for Donna Sines. Donna is on a medical leave, and she sends her apologies that she couldn't join us this evening, so I will, I'm better up here. So, again, good evening. My name is Sue Ring. I'm the associate director for Community Vision. My purpose here tonight is to tell you a little bit about the organization, and mostly to recognize and thank the city of St. Cloud for their investment in our ability to serve St. Cloud residents, especially with our Project Open and Empowerment to Employment initiative. A little bit about Community Vision. Next year is our 25th anniversary. We started actually in Donna's living room, and now have grown to a facility behind the Osceola Council on Aging. Our mission is to bring people and resources together to achieve the community's vision, and we do that through four-pillar, oops, a little too faster, four-pillar programs. The first one is leadership development. We do Leadership Osceola, which is designed to educate business leaders, representatives from local government, small businesses, about Osceola County challenges and issues, and also get them connected, kind of immersed into Osceola County through in hands-on, experiential field trips, for lack of a better term, that explore a community issue, anywhere from economic development to government services, education, criminal justice. And, but the goal is to educate 30 to 35 individuals each year, so then, when they are making business decisions that impact our community, they know what's going on, and they can help shape the right decisions that affect not only today, but generations to come. And we enjoy the participation, not only of St. Cloud through some participants and candidates, but also they're featured in part of our programming throughout the day. And that program goes on from mid-February to mid-June. Our next program is our community health improvement, and we're very fortunate to have Brent's leadership and St. Cloud Hospital participate on our Health Leadership Council that meets monthly. It is actually about 40 to 45 health stakeholders that meet each month. Our design is to make sure that residents have access to quality, safe, and affordable health care as much as possible. We started years ago, we established the federally qualified health care centers in Osceola County. We went from zero to 10. Now, our focus is to build a secondary system of care. It's, you can't have somebody go to either St. Thomas Aquinas Medical Clinic or one of the free health care clinics and say, "You have diabetes. Good luck with that." Now, we're trying to build a system where folks can get access to the diagnostics and the secondary care in an affordable and safe fashion. Our third is community connectivity, which is a little bit of everything. We publish a family resource guide about every 12 to 16 months. It is a comprehensive listing of services that are available to residents. It's designed to educate Osceola County residents to the programs and services, not just those in crisis, but, I mean, obviously, folks can learn about where they need to get, you know, access to health care or a food basket, but also where the city parks are, who their elected officials are, how they sign up for residential services. It's a non-yellow pages, yellow pages, designed to educate residents. We also bring that to life every other year in an event called Discover Osceola. We are having Discover Osceola in September of 2020. We always enjoy a very robust participation from the city of St. Cloud, not only just in government services, but Parks and Recreation. I saw Stephanie sitting back in that, in that audience, but it's, it brings Osceola County to life, and so, families get to enjoy a free, family-friendly, usually a themed event. Last time we did it, we had 10,000 individuals at Osceola Heritage Park, enjoy superheroes, where they got to see the, the city and local government, as well as community partners come to life in a fun and exciting way. And then, the fourth one, and why we're, we're really seeing a big impact, is in our poverty elimination, and that is our Empowerment to Employment and our Project Open programs. And those were designed, they actually came forth about five or six years ago. At the height of the recession, we started seeing a lot of individuals, we do surveys. That's why you have those orange little flatouts. It's our incentive that we give to individuals, because when we ask them to fill out a 52-question survey, you have to incentivize them for that. And it's amazing that people will answer questions for Tupperware. But we started noticing that they were putting, that they were putting, you know, paying 50 or 60% of their household income on rent. And we recognized that's a problem for our community, and certainly, we're not in the housing business. We don't pay rents. We can't whip up affordable housing. But we thought, if we can increase individuals' ways to make more money, either through certification, vocational training, or at least getting them back into the workforce, we may be able to impact and build some self-sufficiency for those individuals. Because we talk about our ALIS population, I don't know if you're familiar with that term. It's through United Way. It's asset-limited, income-constrained, employed individuals. These are individuals that are working, but they're not making enough money to sustain their households. And so, we decided, how can we connect individuals to certification training to increase their earning potential? We recognized that you had to have some key ingredients. We kind of brought people together in short-term duration programs. We can't send people to school for 20 or 30, or, excuse me, for two or three years. It's more about 20 weeks, up to 20 weeks. And it, we need to include free tuition, a small class size, case management, and then also connect them to employment opportunities. We started in 2014 with a CNA program at, at that time, it was called TICO, now Osceola Technical College. We identified single moms, those living in hotels, living with a friend, whoever that is, that were not, you know, insecurely housed. Put them all together in one cohort, offered some life skills and some, you know, time-management study skills on the front end. Then they received the actual CNA healthcare curriculum from OTEC, and then at the end, offered job skills, resumes, mock interviews. We asked our Health Leadership Council to hire that first class, and we thought, if we can get 50% of them to graduate, we'll be happy. All 12 of them did. I mean, we're talking to a single mom with eight kids, got a job at Nemours. It was wildly successful. And so, we found that we had, we thought, a recipe for success to get these individuals on a clear path to a new opportunity for them. So, with this, we've done nine CNA cohorts. We had, we've had a 97% graduation rate, 90% have passed their boards. Some go on to continuing education opportunities. Must be too thick with my thumb there. And we, as I said, we've had nine CNA classes. We recognized not everybody wants to be a CNA, has the background to be in health care, so we decided we, at the same time, Valencia was opening their advanced manufacturing center, and they came to us and said, "Can you help us put together a cohort of accelerated electronic board assembly?" Lockheed Martin had gone to them and said, "Our workforce is retiring. We really need to ramp up some high-tech positions." And so, we went to the Council on Aging, stuck flyers in their food baskets to help recruit that first class. Again, we had 12 people participate and all graduate, so they've gone from a food pantry to working at Lockheed Martin. We've had probably 80-plus individuals that have graduated from, I'm really, this must be on a timer. There, we've had 80-plus individuals that have graduated from just the electronic board assembly, working at Lockheed Martin. We've then expanded to include welding, and most of these are all offered at Valencia's Advanced Manufacturing Center on Shady Lane. Welding, mechatronics, computer numerical control, all of these high-tech industries that were taking individuals that are either trapped in low-wage, low-opportunity positions, getting them the certification training they need, so they have a skilled trade, and then they go and turning tax liabilities into tax-paying citizens. We've been really fortunate that about 30 to 35% of our participants have been St. Cloud residents. And then, in fact, our first welders were from the city of St. Cloud, and one of our female welders is from the city of St. Cloud, and she works for Titan Motorsports. And so, she's the only female within this motorsports industry, and she's welding race cars for a living. So, we expanded to include construction. We did a pilot program with a transition house to do it over at the OTEC campus in St. Cloud. So, these are individuals that have, you know, a sketchy background or incarceration background. If we can get them back to work in a skilled trade, they're more likely to less, you know, not to offend and become, again, not a tax burden, but... We've then expanded to include welding, and most of these are all offered at Valencia's Advanced Manufacturing Center on Shady Lane. Welding, mechatronics, computer numerical control, all of these high-tech industries that were taking individuals that are either trapped in low-wage, low-opportunity positions, getting them the certification training they need so they have a skilled trade, and then they go and turning tax liabilities into tax-paying citizens. We've been really fortunate that about 30 to 35% of our participants have been St. Cloud residents. And then, in fact, our first welders were from the City of St. Cloud. And one of our female welders is from the City of St. Cloud, and she works for Titan Motorsports. And so, she's the only female within this motorsports industry, and she's welding race cars for a living. So, we expanded to include construction. We did a pilot program with the Transition House to do it over at the O-Tech campus in St. Cloud. So, these are individuals that have, you know, a sketchy background or a incarceration background. If we can get them back to work in a skilled trade, they're more likely to less, you know, not to offend and become, again, not a tax burden, but a taxpayer within our community. And so, we've expanded to construction. So, we now have about nine different disciplines that we offer in our Project Open program. Some individuals can't wait to go to school, and we just do some targeted case management to try to get them back to work and do specific employment. We have, where we're different from, say, a career source or a goodwill, is we work with individuals one-on-one. We're not going to serve necessarily 200 people and, and kind of put them all on a one-size-fits-all approach. Many of them need that hands-on, that kind of coaching on a one-on-one basis. They don't know how to navigate a job search. And so, we provide that one-on-one basis so we can make them kind of address those barriers. Many of them have, you know, low self-esteem, they've been turned down so many times, they, they've made bad decisions. We just try to address all of those so we can make them the most ideal representative potential job applicant and ideally employed at the end of the day. So, it's been for a minimal investment. These tuitions go anywhere from $2,500 was the CNA, up to $7,000. But what we try to do is leverage resources with other partners so the burden is not all placed on one individual or one entity. We started with Wells Fargo was our initial funder, that they, they leapt with us. We have the saying, "Leap and the net will appear." So, we leapt with Wells Fargo and said, "Hey, you want to pay for the first class?" And they said, "Sure." What was great about our community, though, is that that paid for the tuition, and we didn't realize that there was, like, background tests and, you know, all these other ancillary costs. And so, the community came together, the Council on Aging and Transition House, and the Health Department, and said, "We'll run TB tests," or "We'll do, we'll fill in these missing pieces so it could all come together." So, there's no fee to the individuals that participate in the program. And what's important to recognize is that this is not a handout. These individuals, they earned this opportunity. Not only do we expect them to be on time and at school and put forth 100%, 110% to be successful, we vet everybody before they go through the program. Because we want to make sure, A, that there is a need. Because resources are limited, we can't send everybody to school. We want to make sure that we are good stewards of our taxpayer dollars, as well as we want them to be successful. And so, and that's where the case management comes in with our partner with the Council on Aging, is that we walk side-by-side with these individuals. So, if their lights get turned off in the middle of class, if they run out of food in the middle of the program, we want to be there with them so we can address as much as we can, mitigate those challenges, so they can be successful and complete the programs and, again, graduate and become employed individuals. So, as you can see, we have a large number of partners that have been part of this journey with us, and we are so grateful to now have the City of St. Cloud to invest in this opportunity. We just had somebody, you know, go over and test for mechatronics today, that he's going to start in January, a St. Cloud resident that's just kind of flopping around from friend to friend for a place to stay. But we had another gentleman, the graduation ceremony was yesterday, and he went from homelessness, and he's going to start making $70,000 with benefits in about two weeks. And that is what these dollars that you, when you invest in Community Vision, that's what you're investing in, is our ability to be able to work with these individuals and help them change the direction of their lives. So, on behalf of Community Vision, our board, and the clients that we serve, we thank the City of St. Cloud for your investment, and we look forward to working with you to continue this program and all the other things that we do. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We certainly are amazed at all the work that Community Vision does, and our city manager would like to say a word, Mrs. Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. We really appreciate what you do, and it's my honor to introduce our Deputy Mayor to present you a check for $25,000.
You're so grateful. Thank you. Can we all go down, ma'am?
Sure. There will not be a presentation by St. Cloud Main Street. Which brings us to our Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on an item not in this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the City Council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Scott Everett. Please state your name and address for the record.
Name's Scott Everett. I own the Drunken Parrot's Loon at 3447 13th Street here in St. Cloud. Appreciate you hearing me out. I just wanted to address New Year's Eve. I was working with Brian Fisher from Blues and Blues to be a part of their downtown area, their block, to set up a tent down there and be one of the vendors. Originally, working with Brian, when he had a meeting with the events coordinator, he was told that would be possible, forced to do that, and that I would share in the cost of their bands and stuff. Now, today I received a call saying that I wasn't going to be allowed because they were trying to keep it strictly the downtown business owners, which I have an issue with. I've been a business owner in this town for nine years. I'm over in the West Gate Plaza, pay the same taxes, same fees as everyone else. I don't think it's fair that my business, myself, or my employees are excluded from this event. Since they've started this event on New Year's Eve, I can't compete with it. I've had to stop hiring bands on New Year's Eve because I just can't compete with the tax dollars that are put into this event. So, I've just written off New Year's Eve. Now, I've asked to be a part of it. Like I said, as of the day, today, I was told I, I wasn't going to be allowed. So, I'm here to address it with you guys and hope that you will take a look at it and see if you agree that is, as, just because I'm not a downtown business owner, that I should be excluded.
Mrs. Sturgeon, is this something you can?
Absolutely. I'd like to sit down with my team and see if we can work something out, let them be an active participant. So, I'll give you my card and, and I'll have my assistant call you tomorrow, if you'll give me your number.
Thank you, Mr. Everett, I'm sure. Our city manager will help you with that. Thank you. Hewett Crumpler.
Good evening. Oops.
Good evening.
Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I don't know what happened to my voice. I've been up here many times. Pretty much, I'm a broken record. I ask that you do what's in the best interest of all the citizens of St. Cloud and not any special interest groups. I'm going to ask that again tonight, over and over, until it's not necessary anymore. I do have a couple of quick questions for the record I'd like to ask. When the mayor, actually, I'll ask everybody. Have, have any of you taken any money from Mr. Berlinsky in the way of contribution to your campaign funds, him or his family? Can you please identify yourselves? For the record.
Chuck Cooper, I have not taken any money.
For your campaign, okay.
No.
It's up to the rest of you.
I don't know who Berlinsky is.
It's public record.
Public record, ma'am.
Yes, on that public record, Nathan, I believe you took, take money. You've taken money from Mr. Berlinsky and his family members. Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am, three years ago.
When you ran for office.
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Yeah, and you're going to run again. So, we can expect probably you'll get some more money. And Mr. Trace, I believe you did as well.
All of that is a matter of public record, and no campaign contribution ever goes into the thought process for any vote or anything that we do up here.
Well, I appreciate that comment, but I think people should be aware of it. It matters. I take it you've taken no money from the company called Avex or any of their people? None that I could find on the record?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then I have a question about the process by which something becomes on the, on the list of obsolete items. Maybe Mr. Manzares could explain that? How does property, land, become obsolete and therefore, when things are obsolete, I guess the city manager is allowed to get rid of them, correct? So, can you explain to me how property, land, becomes obsolete if it's got an intended purpose? And, and then I have a follow-up question.
Are you referring to the item that's on the agenda?
No, I'm referring to any item in general, any land at all.
Well, with regard to, I will answer the question with regard to personal property, but keeping in tune with the City Council's policy, the issue regarding the obsolete of land would be an item that's on the agenda, and I would defer to that point to address it, so we'd be consistent with the policy of the City Council. Property, real personal property, if you don't answer, the personal property is determined to be obsolete, intend to be obsolete by the city staff. It's presented to the City Council, for the City Council to make the final determination. And there are specific requirements about how property that is determined to be obsolete is, is transferred or sold, typically by auction or being given to a, another governmental entity, with the exception of real property. And there is a provision in the code that deals with the sale of real property.
Is real property, real property land or something else?
Ma'am, real property is land.
Thank you. And I guess the question I have, I understand your point about the agenda. I'm not asking about that. I'm asking simply, have we had any, for this year, for this calendar year, have we had any listed real property, land, listed as surplus this year?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
No. Okay, thank you. And I'll leave it to that. Again, let's do what's in the best interest of all the citizens, not friends, not special interest group, not people who donate to your campaigns. Thank you.
I'd like to say, I believe that all this council has always made decisions they believe are in the best interest of the city and not to any individual. And I certainly have made votes that went against people who've made contributions to my campaign. Jennifer Phillips.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Phillips, and I live on Deer Creek Community at 2060 Big Buck Drive. And I've only been a resident here since April. Took me forever to go through the process of changing all my vehicles and everything, and my motorcycles and all. But I'm pleased to be here, and I really love the community. I just would like to know where we are at on the roadways, because my biggest concern is seeing all the house, housing developments going up and not enough room for our traffic. And especially our community, especially Deer Creek, there's been quite a few incidents that's been quite scary. And I've been attending HOA meetings recently, setting up new ones, and just trying to figure out what we can do as a community and what you are able to do, because I found out since we're on a gated community, it's up to you, the city, to provide us with the necessary things to keep our community safe.
Do you have any other comments?
I'm so sorry. This is my first time.
You're doing great.
All right, you did a good job. You have any other comments?
I just, I'm worried, I just would wonder if there's any way we can talk about getting a traffic light for that road, perhaps maybe getting the, all the buses to stop within the communities like ours does, so that way it doesn't back up traffic on a already, you know, single-lane road both ways. Let's see, oh, another entranceway I, I've found out recently was denied for our community, although we have 80 to 100 more houses going up in our community alone in Deer Creek. And really, I just want to, my purpose here is just to find out if there's anything we could do to make our roadways more safe, especially since recently we did have a pretty bad accident that caused one of our lights to go out in our entranceway.
You have any other comments?
I'm sorry, I think that's it. If you could just enlighten me so I know what's going on.
Thank you, Mrs. Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mayor, absolutely. See the gentleman, Nassim, if you'll stand up? If you'll take her information, we will get you in touch with the right people, and we will help you and, and work with you, see if we can help you some of your problems. And I'd love to come during your HOA meetings.
Yes. Perfect.
So, if you'll give them your information, we'll, we'll get in contact with you.
Perfect, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We appreciate your being here. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during the Citizens Forum? If not, that brings us to our consent. Oh, I'm sorry.
Darren Davis, 2755 Mercedes. A few years ago, we had a problem with parasailers in the neighborhood chasing farm animals and cows and neighbors and all kinds of stuff. Well, the chief made it go away for a while. Well, now they're back, and they're back with a vengeance. Every Saturday and Sunday morning, they're coming out there and they're flying about 25, 25 to 50 foot above the hoses. They go up at daybreak and they ride for two hours, and they come back in and go. They go out through the fields and they chase the cows around and scare everything, cause problems. Is there anything y'all can do to, because they're taking off in St. Cloud City property out of Gramercy, the famous Gramercy. Is there anything that y'all can do?
Well, I'm certainly, city manager can instruct, we'll look into it.
We'll have the police chief look into it.
Well, I've made lots of phone calls. The sheriff department sat up in the driveway and videoed them. They've done all kinds of stuff trying to stop it. And Saturday before last, I called St. Cloud PD for the sheriff department, because they said, "You need to get ahold of them." They said, "Nobody showed up."
Are you talking about the one that looks like, like a go-kart?
It looks like a go-kart, but it has a, like a parachute above it with a fan.
Wow.
And there's four or five of them.
Chief Galton, would you like to speak to that?
You have to get a permit to fly your drone. I would be surprised you wouldn't have to get.
They said they do not go under any rules.
They don't. And I think you try, if you want to, we'll follow up like we did before. The problem with them is they, they pull up on trailers. They don't have to fly from an airport. They can deploy in a, a matter of about 50 yards. What we're probably going to have to do is go back out, locate them when they're having the Gramercy or somebody from the HOA trespass them from the property, because they have to have a takeoff location. What we're talking about looks like a little go-kart with a fan on it that runs with a parachute, basically. So, we've, we've chased them out before, and these organizations, they run in little groups, and then what they like to do is to find isolated areas, and they fly around and, and spend half the morning on the weekends, and they get back on the ground, pack it up, put it on their little trailer and go away. So, we'll follow up. I'll give you a call, and we can, we can resolve that. Easy enough.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Anyone else speak to during the Citizens Forum?
Yeah, my name is John Rollis, former city councilman. I live at 430 Florida Avenue, St. Cloud. I'm, I'm been involved with the growth of our community about 20 years ago. Our councilman bought the Stevens plantation, and we coddled hell about doing that, but as, because we were thinking about the future of our community and wanted to control what was going on. You know, the West New Dalton Road was a lot of help with the turnpike to help those people in that area. But I didn't realize when we bought the ranch, I found out recently that there's another over 100 acres sitting south of that. What has happened? What is happening to that hundred acres? Have we got it sold? Are we promoting it? It'd be a good place to, to get development from a light manufacturing operation? I just wonder if the city's doing anything with that? Can you give me an answer?
Maybe I'm seeing.
Well, Mr. Rollis, are you referring to the hundred and forty-two acres of Stevens plantation?
Is that what it was? Hundred and forty?
Hundred and forty-two. Hundred and forty-two acres is the undeveloped piece of Stevens plantation that's left.
Okay.
If that's what you're referring to.
Well, that's the rest of the ranch, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the Stevens plantation dependent special district approved the contract to sell the hundred and forty-two acres to Equity Development. And it's also part of, it's in conjunction with the agreement that's on tonight's agenda in front of the city council for another fifty-two acres.
Okay, because.
If the contract is approved by the city council tonight, then both those parcels will be on the contract.
Because we purchased that, you know, twenty-some years ago. And it'll be worth a lot more money with all the developments going on here. So I just wanna make sure that it's going in the right direction, the city's getting their money's worth at the present numbers that are available in our community. That's all I need. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Rollis.
Very good. Thank you very much, Council. My name's Wayne Lubnitsky, 3225 Court Avenue. Wanted to talk a little bit about the, what everybody's talking about, I guess, the public hearing on this property, fifty-one acres that we sold. A little history.
Mr. Mayor, that's, you're currently on public forum, so if you could wait to that.
Public hearing, we're not, oh, this is not the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, very good. Well, let me know, I'll be talking about that.
I will, you'll have time opportunity.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak to some items on the agenda?
If not, we'll move to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. Mr. Sturgeon?
I'll defer to Deputy Mayor, she can hit her buzzer for.
I'd like to pull item F to have Mr. Wheeler give an update on what that item is. I think the community would be interested to hear and learn about that. Pretty cool. And I wanted to pull item G for discussion.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, sir. From a process perspective, I'd like to move item F to council action. I got Mr. Wheeler explaining all about that.
Okay, we will move item F to council action. Mr. Trace, Councilmember Trace?
I would like to call item H.
If I hear correctly, item H?
Correct.
Anything else? First of all, would anyone in the audience like to speak to the consent agenda? If not, then we'll go to.
Ms. Crumpler does.
Do what?
Ms. Crumpler.
Oh, Ms. Crumpler, I didn't see you getting up.
Hughette Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. On the consent agenda, which is never non-controversial or routine, by the way, item number A. It says, directing the city manager to declare items obsolete, damaged, and surplus. And it says no cost here. Are there any real property items on that list? If so, what are they? And how do you determine that there's no cost to the citizen? That's my first question.
Would you go to your second question?
Sure. Happy to. I have a comment regarding C and D. C and D are taking the impact fees that are charged to new buildings from eighty percent to a hundred percent, roughly, I believe that's about right. And that's for the police department, impact fees, which are very important for having cars and, and things that the police department needs to operate and police station as well. And the impact fee for the rescue, fire and rescue is important for fire and rescue. So instead of eighty percent, whatever it was, it's now a hundred percent, which gives us a tremendous opportunity to improve that funding for our public safety, both for the fire and police, and I'm in favor of that. I would like to know if anybody has done the math to say how much more money the city will have as a result of that increase? Does the city manager know that or the mayor or somebody? Or maybe Andre could tell us what, what meaning that has for us financially?
Okay, you have any other questions?
Sure I do. Of course.
Go on.
I'm going to, we're leaving off F and G, correct? And H for, for now? Is that true?
It's true.
Okay. So we'll get a chance to come back at those. Number I, it says, that's right, no, that's H, never mind. This, on, whether it says, there isn't, I'm in the transportation mobility fee, a hundred percent cost recovery for residential and ten percent for non-residential. Does that mean the fee is ten percent or the discount is ten percent?
Fee.
The fee.
Fee.
So the residential fee for mobility will be a hundred percent, but for businesses, it'll be ten percent? What was it? What's it going from to ten?
Thirty, yeah.
Thirty to ten. So that's a substantial savings for any business that wants to come to town. That should improve their willingness to do so. Okay. I'm very much interested in the, in the question, and I'm gonna stay here in case I have a follow-up. Thank you. First question.
The first question, there's no real property listed on the obsolete items list. There's five pages of items that are part of the agenda packet that was distributed and published and none of them have, it's, there's no real property or land listed on that list of obsolete items.
I didn't say obsolete, I said surplus.
Surplus or obsolete, just.
So we have no, we have no property that's listed as surplus?
No, ma'am, there's no real property listed as, which was your question, is there any real property on there?
Okay, I guess we'll come back and visit that.
Mr. Sturgeon? On item C and D, do we have any estimate of how much money?
No, because it's based on the amount of permits and again, that comes in on it. We could do it in arrears by annually, but we have done economic analysis for both the two largest annexations we've done, Tohoku and Center Lake. I went on ad nauseam about that several times, even in the public safety task force meeting. But, you know, we could do that, but it would be a swag until a year in arrears.
Well, actually, Mr. Sturgeon, I will just say, it means a lot to the city to have these additional funds. And even if it's a rough ballpark estimate, it would be very meaningful to, to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crumpler.
Mayor? I did the.
Mr. Councilmember Trace?
I did the quick math, on police, it, it goes up a hundred and seventy-eight dollars, on fire, it goes up a hundred and thirty-seven dollars. It's about three hundred and fifteen dollars per single-family residential unit. And multiply that by however many houses there are in the city, I don't know what that is.
Trace, you got a little bit different numbers than what I did, but, or close enough. Would anyone else like to speak to the consent agenda? If not, let's go to item number G.
On this item, we are requesting an additional nine thousand one hundred dollars for the planning contract with GAI, and I'm okay with that. I was wondering, as a council, did we want to add some contingency to this contract? Because, you know, things will pop up while we're going through design so that the city manager would be able to sign change orders. I was suggesting maybe thirty thousand dollars added as, in this approval that could go as approved by the city manager. Just seeing your thoughts with that.
That certainly sound like a wise move. I have no problem with that.
He can sign off on it anyways, it's up to fifty, so.
He can't though unless there's contingency in the contract.
Not under your current purchasing policy.
So I know we've been trying to change moving forward, we've been trying to change to add some contingency to the projects so that we can expedite projects through, not get hung up waiting for council approval.
Yeah, as long as you keep us in the loop, yeah.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, so, so with that item, you'd have to include it as part of your motions and you want to.
So you want me to make a motion?
I, I think we'd like, for clarity, if we could take a separate motion on that item only.
Do you want me to do it now?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve item number G on the consent agenda and adding thirty thousand dollars in contingency that the city manager can approve. And for the city manager to keep council in the loop of any change orders that are executed on this contract.
Do I have a second? Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, second. From Councilmember Askew.
One question first, I thought the whole contract was nine thousand dollars.
No.
That's.
That's an increase.
The increase is nine thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Would anyone like to speak to this item? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Wait a minute, I got a light here.
I'm sorry, didn't see your light.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Cooper?
I'm not gonna let you stop me. Bill, if it does run over and you need part of that thirty thousand, will you let the council know as quickly as you can what it is so that we would just know in the loop?
Absolutely.
Not after the fact?
Absolutely.
I'd appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. That's it.
Thank you.
I can amend my motion to say, let council know prior to executing the change order.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll for the approval of this resolution as amended?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Brings us to item H. Councilmember Trace?
So I just wanted to, to talk through this, I'm a hundred percent a fan of phrasing the, the residential side of things up to the hundred percent, I thought it was there already. So that, that's a good part. I have a bit of hesitation on reducing the commercial side of things down to ten percent because that's not, that's not targeted towards anything, that's just anything general commercial. It could be gas stations, other, just general highway commercial. Giving that sort of incentive towards some of those low-wage areas isn't the best thing. I think if we could kind of pull some money towards targeted high-wage items and not just kind of everything that's non-residential, I just wanted to kind of talk through that for a little bit.
So are you wanting to make a change?
So I'll, I'll make this kind of as, as part of a motion on this separately, but just keeping, keeping the commercial where it's at and then looking at other avenues for incentivizing high-wage jobs and not just everything.
So you want to leave the commercial at where it's at, thirty percent right now, and we'll look at it later and see what we.
Yeah, I just don't feel it, feel it right to, to reduce that even more without having it targeted towards something.
All right, I'd second that.
And then also, another item I want to bring up is, I've been talking with staff for the past couple of weeks on implementing a transportation impact analysis study for, for any development that comes in. It, it's, it's more of a study on any local impacts that any community has, something like Deer Creek. It, it would go through the analysis to make sure that if a traffic light is warranted at some point in the development of that, that community or that area, that the developer would be on the hook for that, not us coming in after the fact and putting in something like a traffic light or turn lanes. It, it being thought about and then contracted for them to do that at some point through the development process. So I just wanted to talk through that and see if everyone had any feelings on that as well.
I like it.
Councilmember Matheny?
I like your idea, Keith. Mr. Trace, I, I wanted to ask a question too. I had my agenda review, but the city manager wasn't in my particular one, so I just want to make sure the information I got was correct. But when we went through this, all of these mobility fees going up to a hundred percent, I did ask if we were still going down the path of looking to make sure that the impact fees are still appropriate, because they're from 2017, and I was told that we're still moving down the road to looking at the, all of the mobility fees and impact fees and things.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
This is just a stopgap to get us up to a hundred percent.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We are working right now on a scope to go ahead and put out the bid to redo those impact fee analysis.
Great. And then I wanted to also say to, I guess mostly Mr. Trace, because he wasn't here when we adopted these, we had a consultant that did these fees and we were advised at the time by our consultant that we hired that we should not adopt these at a hundred percent. That's why they were at eighty to begin with, because they were saying that you can potentially have people come and fight you on your analysis, but if you stayed, you know, at eighty percent, then you didn't really get into a legal battle. But I'm glad that we're going up to a hundred percent for sure, but I just wanted to kind of give the history of why we didn't do a hundred to start with, is that was what we were advised at the time, so, great.
Well, more accurately, your, your point is exactly right, however, just to be more accurate, it was more recommendation by your consultant to take the conservative approach to avoid problems with the mobility fee studies and your impact fees analysis. So it was just an ultra-conservative position that the, that the consultants took when they recommended the methodology to the city council.
Councilmember Askew?
And when we do this mobility fee, again, can we take in the point in Mr. Trace's idea of that we did not spread it out to different types of commercial businesses? I sort of like that idea that we can, we can target to certain areas. We just left it as straight commercial, so if we can put that in that.
I take that as council direction, yes, we can.
Okay.
Yes, I like it too.
Do you want us to vote on this separate?
Any other discussion? Councilmember Trace, you have a motion, would you just restate your motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent item H, but modifying it to have the non-residential mobility fees stay the same, with direction to staff to look into a transportation impact analysis and having targeted industries as some sort of incentive for transportation or mobility fees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hughette Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I would like to point out that these fees are all on new development, not on existing citizens. That's an important point for people to understand. And I think Mr. Trace's idea is an excellent one, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness. Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us back to our consent agenda. We have a discussion, a motion by council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Askew, second, by Councilmember Matheny, to approve the consent agenda with noting that F has been moved and we've already acted on G and was that H?
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to public hearings.
Oh, F.
Oh, I'm sorry, we go back to F?
Or do you bring that to council action?
F is gonna roll down to council action, we'll talk about.
F goes to council action, I'll bring it up, the last item under council action. Okay?
Final and public hearing for ordinance number.
Claudia, thank you.
Sorry. Final and public hearing for ordinance number 2019-45.[1735.78]
Sorry. Final and public hearing for ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash forty-five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning portions of a utility easement located on property located east of La Salle Avenue, west of Packer Avenue, and north of Pine Tree Drive, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for sebribility, conflict, and an effective date.
Mr. Andre. Good evening. Andre Anderson, planning and zoning director. This is the final public hearing for Gramercy Farms' phase nine abandonment of easement. This item was brought to you based on the request for an easement by OUC that, as the clerk said, located between La Salle Avenue and Packer Avenue, basically for some power poles. And this was reviewed by staff at turn twenty-four, and there were no letters of objection from any affected parties, and there were no comments or conditions that was imposed by the DRC. The first reading was on November twenty-first, and it was a vote by three-two, and then there were some outstanding issues that were identified related in the Gramercy Farms specifically regarding re-permitting to remove a pipe. The image you see on the screen is the plat currently today for the easement. And this request is consistent with our strategic goals for infrastructure. DRC and staff recommends approval of ordinance two thousand nineteen forty-five, and asks the city council to do the same. As an update regarding the outstanding issue, if you recall at the last meeting, the KB Home representative indicated that they would work to find a resolution to the item, and since that time, our Public Works Director has been in constant contact with KB Home in getting updates on the progress towards that resolution. And Mr. Nassim Gendour is here to answer any questions or to give an update if you so desire.
Okay. Would you like to speak to this item? Nassim?
I can provide a statement.
Could you do that?
Nassim Gendour, Public Works Director. So the last council meeting, we were directed to provide a letter that was sent out to Gramercy Farms, CDD, as well as to KB Homes in regards to the direction of the city council for the pipe removal. That was done. And since then, with contact with Steve McCon, with KB Homes, the last contact with him, he has coordinated, contacted the Gramercy Farms CDD, who has agreed to sign the application as the owner for the application for the permit for the owner to go towards the South River Water Management District. They've contacted, they are working with StanTech Engineering, who is CDD's engineer, in order to analyze the model per the requirements and have provided a timeline in terms of what, have provided a timeline and removal of the pipe on that. The timeline is submittal for the permit prior to the end of the calendar year as well, and then depending on the South River Water Management District's comments and their time required to review the plans and possibly permitting it during the pipe removal by, in April two thousand twenty, and with the final approval inspection by South River Water Management in May of two thousand twenty.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
I think the applicant is Mayor, the applicant.
Is the applicant here? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Dana Crosby Collier. I'm an attorney with Sheffield Loman and Wilson, PA, a law firm that has offices in Lake County and Orange County and Volusia County. I'm over here today on behalf of KB Homes, and my presentation's going to come up here in a moment, and I'll speak to the issue of the vacation of the easement.
We don't have prior notification from your presentation?
Yes, we don't have a PowerPoint loaded up.
So we don't have no PowerPoint loaded up, and we do not put in US reports?
Oh, okay. Let me get a copy of the PowerPoint, and you all have a copy, and we'll go through it together.
Okay.
Thank you. So I've given you all a copy, three sheets with some notes. As the staff has already explained, the history on this item, initially, this was an easement that was granted by the property owner in January of nineteen eighty-one. The easement was granted, it's included in your packet as Exhibit A. It was granted for the purpose of laying, constructing, maintaining, operating, repairing, and removing electric lines. So it's always been intended for overhead electric lines, and it was granted to the city because the city was at that time the entity that would take the grant of the easement. Eventually, OUC came in, began providing electricity in this area, and they became the successor provider. So when we went to release this easement, we went first to OUC and asked them if they would release it. They did a finding. They found that they no longer need this easement for its intended purpose. So they granted the partial release of the easement and transmitted that to the city. At such time, we learned that the city has a code requirement for vacating an easement, and we proceeded to apply to the city to vacate the easement. As you all know, and as staff just mentioned, this has been heard twice, and both times it's been not acted upon, well, it was passed for this hearing, but it wasn't really approved as it should have been. The property owner said, the subsequent property owner says it's time to vacate the easement, but the city is holding it up because of unrelated issues, which are these drainage issues. As mentioned, you have a code provision that tells us how we apply, and OUC has stated they do not need the easement, so we have asked staff to recommend approval, and DRC and staff have recommended approval of release of this easement. The question we have now is how we can get our easement vacated. And so we looked at the code, and we went to what's called a standard of review for the vacation of an easement. And since the vacation of the easement is established in the city code, you have your standard. It tells you what to do. So we have tried to work with you all to help facilitate this action with the CDD, and we would like to just remain in the loop and be a good neighbor and assist in having the drainage issue remediated, but it's not on our property, and we do not own the property. So I would need to be sure that it's clear that there's only so much someone can do when you're trying to assist the Water Management District and staff and everyone with remediating an issue on someone else's property. And we feel like we've been a really good neighbor. We've done everything you've asked, and we want to ask you to go ahead and release this utility easement. So there's a standard of review if a challenge is made on an action such as this, which is called a quasi judicial action, and there are three questions that we would be asked to answer. And the first one is, was procedural due process afforded the applicant? Did the city council observe the essential requirements of law? And was the city council's decision supported by competent substantial evidence? So I've looked at all of these issues, and that's why I'm here tonight, because we're trying to apply the correct requirement of law. In this case, you have a code. The code tells you what to do when you need to vacate an easement. And the test is very simple. If the city and the OUC don't need the easement, it should be released. We feel like the city has, we have met the burden of showing why the easement should be released, but we feel like the city council hasn't applied the correct law to this because you're looking at other issues that aren't related to our property, and they're not related to the applicant at all. There's something that's in the area that's controlled by another entity. I also, the more I looked at this issue, and I've been looking at it now for a couple of days, the more I looked at it, the more I became very concerned that we're experiencing a taking or an exaction because we have, as a subsequent property owner, we gave a grant of an easement to the city and said, this is for utility lines. And then time went on, and the utility provider said, hey, we don't need it anymore. Rightfully, that property should go back to the person who gave it for that purpose. It shouldn't be held up for things that aren't related to a utility line. So the more I looked at it, and the more I thought about takings law and jurisprudence for that purpose, I thought, you know, this becomes a real concern for me. So we have a feel, we feel like we're doing everything we can do to work with the CDD to remedy this issue, but we also know that OUC said, we don't need that property anymore. So we are the owner, and we're asking that the easement be released. So I'll just wrap it up. In conclusion, we feel like we've established that we're entitled to the actions sought in accordance with the city code. The city and OUC have said, we don't need that easement anymore. We have no further use for the easement. The staff and DRC have recommended approval, which is what your code says needs to happen before y'all can act on it. And I feel as though the city really cannot refuse to vacate the easement based on irrelevant side issues because this is now becoming more of a takings or an exaction issue. I'm being asked as an applicant to do things that are way beyond the scope of releasing a utility easement. So in your packet, you'll find the original deed that gives the grant of the easement. You'll find the OUC letter where they transmitted it to the city and said, we don't need the easement anymore. I've also included a copy of the email the Public Works Director referred to, which talks about the schedule and how hard KB Home is trying to work with the CDD and the city to resolve your drainage issue in the area. And then finally, because this has been the subject of a lot of discussion now for months, I have included a copy of the packet of what the city wishes done with regard to the ditch and pipe, and it is clear that that has nothing to do with an electric easement. So with that said, I'll sit down, and I am here if you have any questions as to any of the legal issues, and of course, Mr. McCon is again here to talk to you about anything that he's been doing with regard to remedying your drainage issue in the area.
Thank you. Would you like to speak?
Yes, sir. Ma'am, would you stand back up and let me ask you a question?
Sure.
I am one council member, but I am one that says, oh, by the way, and you give it to me the last fifteen minutes ago, and you've got about a thirty page to read here, and you're an attorney that's giving us everything that you're spitting out to us, and we understand what you say exactly a hundred percent. I don't like that because you just told me that you thought about it for two or three days before you ever gave it to us fifteen minutes ago. Why didn't we get this a little bit earlier? We could have talked to our staff. We could have looked at it. We'd a whole lot further down the road than where I'm at now. Right now, I'm in a negative side of fifteen minutes ago. That's where I'm coming from.
So we did, I was asked to appear at this meeting, and I've been working on this presentation for a couple of days.
That's not what I'm asking. We should have had this probably three or four days ago, maybe longer.
Yeah.
I don't like this, oh, by the way, and it gets put on the dais fifteen minutes before we are going to talk about it. So I have a problem.
I apologize.
That's where one council member's coming from.
Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So this was something that I've brought up about the drainage issue and wanting to get some participation in resolving the issue because no one will help us. You know, everybody gets up here and says, we're going to be good neighbors, and we're going to help you. As soon as we approve something, it's like they ghost us and act like they don't know who we are. So I had heard from the city manager and Nassim that there was some offers made by you guys, but I haven't heard you say it, about some, my concern is if we approve this easement vacation, you guys will just say, oh, we can't do it. Oh, you know, it's too hard, or whatever. Like, we don't have anything to like hold you to do what you say you're going to do. So I understand there was some offers that you guys were willing to make to us as to show the good faith estimate that you guys are actually going to follow through with this?
Yep. In addition to Steve McCon, KB Home, twenty-one oh-two South Park Center Loop, Orlando, three-two-eight-one-nine. In addition to what I talked about last meeting as far as helping to facilitate the paperwork end of it with StanTech as the CDD engineer, which we've done, and they've already prepared the application as well as hiring Hanson and Walters to help expedite the review of the letter modification that'll be submitted to the Water Management District. And we've also called them and requested a pre-submittal conference, which we hope to have within the next two weeks so we can get that application in before the holidays, as Nassim had mentioned in his timeline that I provided to him. We're prepared to offer the city cash escrow for the value of the estimate the city put together to show that we're going to be good faith neighbors and continue to move forward on this process till its completion. So I believe that in the city's presentation, they threw out a sixty thousand dollar number. We're prepared to offer a cash escrow to that amount to guarantee that we're going to see this through to the end.
And there was something else, right? Because to me, sixty thousand dollars is, you know, you guys could walk away for sixty thousand dollars just to not deal with the headache of it, you know? I mean, that's great. That's great.
We've got, we've got over a hundred lots left to build in here, as well as two plats that'll be in front of the commission. Per my conversation with city staff, one of those plats will be coming up, the first commission or council meeting in January, as well as the last phase. So we've got quite a bit of work left out in front of us. It's what we're asking for is we've got some time that has to have happen to be able to get the modification approved, the letter modification approved. So, and again, you know, it's, that's at the behest of the Water Management District, and while I would like to think that this is, you know, going to be a non-issue for them, I can't commit to them seeing it that way. And we're going to continue to push forward, and I've obviously made the, you know, substantial progress since our last meeting in a short amount of time. So, I mean, there's no, there's no motivation because, again, we've got COs on over a hundred fifty houses that still have to come out. We've got two plats that have to record. We've got COCs that we've got to obtain, you know, with the city for acceptance of infrastructure. So we've got, you know, eighteen months at least of construction in front of us. So, I mean, we're not in a position to walk away from anything at this point.
So what I was told before the meeting tonight was that you would be willing to condition it, that you could only build twenty-four homes?
The problem that we've had with that is, again, I can't guarantee that the Water Management District is going to act any certain way. So the concern that we have, let's say we commit to that, and then the Water Management District declines our application, what is our recourse at that point?
That's exactly how I feel.
I understand that, but just as our council is represented, is that we're trying to help facilitate a problem on a neighboring piece of property and doing everything within our power to facilitate this issue. Now, again, we can't, we don't have any leverage on the CDD. They're being cooperative at this point, and again, we don't have any leverage on the Water Management District. So for us to condition something that would impede us for the rest of the project goes above and beyond what, you know, we can commit to. So we can commit to, you know, cash escrow, you know, to help that if for some reason KB Home went out of business in the meantime, that the city would have the funds to complete the process. Now, I would expect that we would have some kind of termination from the Water Management District in the next sixty days. But again, you know, the approval on the second phase of nine plat, the nine B plat, won't be in front of you in the next sixty days, so you will have the opportunity to have that, you know, it's kind of like that leverage that you seek, you want us to basically, you know, finish.
So you can't sell any lots until the plat's in place, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So what's the rush to vacate the easement? Why can't the easement vacation wait until the plat comes when we're further down the road and we know more what the Water Management District is going to do?
Well, just as council's said, that, you know, we followed all the procedure. The plat, again, will be in front of you on the sixth of January for nine A, and there's a second phase of that plat, nine B, which will be a couple of months down the road.
And is this easement in nine A or nine B?
Yes, ma'am. It's in nine A, and it impacts two lots in nine A.
I'd make a motion to continue it until the January meeting when the plat comes, then we're further down the road. We know, you know, once they submit to the Water Management District, we'll have a better idea when you get the first REI, you know, how it's going to move forward.
I'd second that.
Have a motion for continuance by Councilmember Matheny, second by Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Askew?
Just ask the question. I'm not good at the contract thing, but if this escrow thing that you're talking about, how does that hold anybody to anything? You're just saying if that pipe doesn't get replaced, the city gets sixty thousand dollars and they can do it themselves? That was based on, that was based on staff's estimate. So yes, you would basically be able to cash the check and, you know, move forward with that work.
I'm assuming, Mr. Askew, that the suggestion is it would serve like a performance bond with a cash basis to it. So in the event that the obligation or the KB Homes, in this case, didn't perform the task, then the city would have access to the funds, and the funds could be used to complete the task either through internal staff or through a third party, even contractor.
And it's a check, you know, so it can be cashed at any time. It's, you don't have to deal with the bonding company and try to cash in a bond, you know, so. Just going to state, pipe was not removed, the city gets sixty thousand? How's that? It's, it will basically fund the estimate that the city's provided for that work. Just seems like it's coming across as, here, I'm going to give you sixty thousand dollars, we're going to continue. No, no, what we're trying to do. But you've been crazy helpful. We've, we've asked, like, what, because we were asked by staff, like, what we could offer as far as an assurance. So in addition to the commitment, and, you know, so I've hopefully shown that, at least to get the ball rolling, that I've been true to my word, and that we would also offer this as we continue to move through the process. And essentially, we're trying to say, give us the benefit of the time to make everything happen, and that you use that money as a guarantee that we're going to continue to, you know, move forward and do what we say. And that you use that money as a guarantee that we're going to continue to, you know, move forward and do what we say.
So there's a possibility in six months this pipe's gone, everything's resolved?
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we've got the CDD to agree. I've already got a contract that was looked at it. We're applying with the Water Management District. They have to agree to the modification, the letter modification to the permit. And as soon as they agree, that contract will be on site. We'll restore the ditch, you know? So all the modeling's been complete. So we're much, so let's, let's assume that the modeling and the preparation of the letter modification is 30% of the work. We've completed 30% of the work. The second 30% is the application that's got to go to the Water Management. The last 30% is the contract completing the work. So we're, in, in three weeks, I'm 30% further than where you were three weeks ago.
Right. And I appreciate everything you're doing and what you're saying. We've just been, not going to say lied to up here through the years, but is there any way we can bring a citizen up to, that's affected by this area? Seems to have a lot more history on that, if that would be okay?
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
Darren Davis, 2755. I guess I am the one that's being affected. I guess it's the pipe that is on our property line and their property line? That's the one? Okay. $60,000 might get the pipe out, but it sure is not going to clean the ditches that have been not maintained since the day they took the property over. Goes all the way from the north side of Gramercy to the south side, which comes out at Tucker Avenue. The county has a easement in there, but they said the easement was not recorded, and the county will not clean it because the city has taken it over. And the county says they're not responsible to clean it, even though there is a legal easement there, just like the one they put in on, on the power line. And I don't see why the one on the power line's a big deal because they've already got the roads in and the hoses in and everything on the easement. So I don't understand why this power line easement's a big thing right now because they've already done the construction under it. So, but anyways, on the drainage side, it would be nice to see a little more equity put up to make sure it's done and the rest of the ditches put back the way they were when the county was maintaining them. Because the county's maintained them several times. Brought track hoes and dozers in and cleaned all the ditches out, made them flow right. We never had any flooding problems until Gramercy Farm showed up. And we've been told by Stan Tech, Tanya Stewart, I think is her name, is the engineer, that they have no liability in flooding us out. Their plans were approved by Water Management. And until we challenge their plans with evidence, they're not going to change nothing. That's what they've told us several times. And they've told the city and the county that several times. So, thank you. You got any questions?
I do.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So I did bring up the ditches. That was one of the first things that I brought up when this easement came up. And I was told that the ditches have been cleaned, so they haven't?
There's trees that big around in them ditches.
The one in the CDD was, we took code enforcement back and it was cleaned out.
But I mean, if there's a drainage ditch that runs through the whole property, then that whole drainage ditch needs to be maintained. I mean...
From the main road going south, them ditches have never been touched since construction.
They haven't.
There's maple trees in there that'd be eight or 10 inches of...
They're big trees.
You can't even tell there's a ditch there.
So can we look back into the ditches? Because we were told that the ditches were maintained.
They were. Our code enforcement officer told me that it was, and they had taken care of the ditches.
But it was just a portion, you're saying?
Yes.
So...
The ditch from DSA 1 structure heading north has been maintained, but from there south, it has not been maintained.
Okay.
We will look into it.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Steve?
To address Mr. Davis's concern, I mean, again, we'd be willing to, you know, cash escrow, additional funds, you know, for some reason, like, you know, but we'll work with the Water Management District to, you know, get the modification so this work can be completed. And we just asked that we, you know, be allowed to move forward, you know, with this project. You know, we've, you know, completed development in August. So we've been trying to work through the easement issue and the plat issue, you know? The plat was submitted in February of this year, so it's been quite some time, so... And we're just asking for a little bit of time so we can get all the paperwork handled so this work can actually take place.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else in the audience? We have a motion for continuance. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I do agree that they've been very good and responsive to date. I just want to make sure it keeps going. But to his point about giving them some time, that's why I'm saying, continue this, continue this easement until the plat conversation and have it all in one meeting. I mean, they don't, they're not any closer to selling lots by vacating this easement. They have to have the plat. So that's why I would like to continue it. Just so you guys know, the process, when you submit to the Water Management District, by statute, they have 30 days to either give you comments or approve, but they review much faster than that. So I feel like if, if they actually do get submitted by the end of the year, you know, we could have a good, potentially, you could either have a request for additional information or you could have an approval by, by the time the plat comes. So it just gives you, like, more confidence that it's actually going to happen.
Any other discussion?
I would. Mayor, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Now Nassim, do you have those pictures you took? I, I'm going to take exception to what Mr. Davis said because there's a ditch that runs through. I want to know who put the hay bales in the middle of those ditches. And we've sowed those ditches. And do you have those pictures?
Mr. Sturgeon, I put them hay bales in that ditch, and they're on my property north of that. And I was approved by Water Management to do it for irrigation purposes.
All right. Thank you for letting us know that.
And it is actually stopping the flooding problem in Gramercy because the water from your new development on the west side of us...
It's not my development. Mr. Davis, it's not my development.
Is not getting to it. They were not supposed to pump any water from that new development to us. Every bit of that water has come to us, which I haven't complained because it's been so dry.
All right. Thank you for clarifying. No, we're good. We're good.
Are you good? We have a motion from continuance to January?
Whatever meeting the plat comes back to.
Is it separate January 9th, Landry? January 9th.
Okay, we have a motion for continuance to January 9th. And we have a second from Councilmember Cooper.
Can, instead of a date specific, I mean, we could say January 9th, but what if the plat doesn't come January 9th? Can we tie it to the plat?
Respect, but I, I understood that the plat and this item were moving concurrently. I wasn't sure exactly what happened with the plat, but I believe the plat is absolutely ready to be on the agenda.
Okay. January 9th, then.
Okay, January 9th.
And I'm sorry, but the other reason why it continued to, I'm certain, is because this is an advertised public hearing, and so that would avoid having to re-advertise.
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Member Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Bring us to item number two.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-53, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud amending the City of St. Cloud Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement System, amending Section 8 Disability Providing for Codification, Providing for Separability of Provisions, Repelling All Ordinances in Conflict Herewith at Providing an Effective Date.
Good evening. Joe Eder, interim director, HR and Risk Management. Basically, what this ordinance is requesting is approval so the firefighter and police pension can be modified to add the cancer bill that was passed by the Florida Legislature back in January 1st of this year. It is no changes to, it would not affect the firefighters or the, or the police officers. It's just to add the cancer bill to assure that that would be covered in the pension for the firefighters and police officers. Staff is recommending approval of this, and I'm open for any questions you happen to have.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Discussion or motion by council?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Matheny and second by Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Member Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-54, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending ordinance 2003-047, which is, which as authorized by Chapter 189 Florida statutes, created the Stevens Plantation Improvement Project Dependent Special District, the district to amend the jurisdictional boundaries of the district and provide that upon the sale of property owned by the district and property sold will be removed from the district boundaries and no longer subject to the jurisdiction of the district, providing for notice to the Florida Department of Economic Development, providing that all other terms and provisions of ordinance 2003-047 shall remain in full force and effect and providing for separability and repeal effective date and recording.
Thank you. Is there someone to speak to this item?
I think I, I would address the item, Mr. Mayor, before the com... So this essentially is the fin, is the second meeting and final hearing with regard to this ordinance that would essentially amend the district boundaries as properties are sold from the Stevens Plantation Dependent Special District. It won't change anything related to the Community Development District, which you know is a separate entity that's out there. But simply, it would be consistent with the intent of the district when the district was created, which was, when the dependent special district was created, was that the property, the district would remain in place for as long as the district owned real property. And so as the properties were sold, the district boundaries would change. Those properties would be removed from the district. And at the end of the day, when all the properties are sold, the district would be, essentially, would, would cease.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Mr. Meister?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm David Meister. I'm a resident of Stevens Plantation. I've lived there 14 years. I support this agenda item. We need to get the city and the DSD out of the property development district. It's been a nightmare for the city, the city council, and the DSD, and also for the residents. So as fast as we can get the property sold and DSD out of it, I think it's better off for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Discussion or motion by council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Matheny and a second from Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Member Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
We'd like for items four, five, and six to be read.
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2019-46, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 10.3 acres identified as preserved at Lakeside, located north of 10th Street, east of Crawford Avenue, and west of Old Hickory Tree Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and transmittal for ordinance number 2019-47, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of low-density residential to approximately 10.23 acres identified as preserved at Lakeside, located north of 10th Street, east of Crawford Avenue, and west of Old Hickory Tree Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, applicability and effect, separability, copies on file, and effective date. First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2019-48, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district as PUD, planning unit development compatible with the existing low-density residential future land use designation for approximately 10.23 acres identified as preserved at Lakeside, located north of 10th Street and east of Crawford Avenue and west of Old Hickory Tree Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, separability, and effective date.
Thank you. Andre Anderson, excuse me, Community Development Director. This item is for, the first item is an encumbrance annexation. It is for, as clerks say, approximately 10.23 acres. And there's a little bit of background on this item. It came before the city council previously in 2017. And it was for annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and for a zoning map amendment. And the city council denied the request in December 2017. Subsequently, the applicant then went to the county to submit an application for a preliminary subdivision plan in February of 2019. And before they were able to get the final approval of their preliminary subdivision plan, they would then have to come back to the city for a water and sewer agreement, which they did, and also signed a notice of encumbrance that was done in April of 2019. Since that time, they then got approval from the county for a site development plan in August of this year. And so they are now coming forward to us because at the time that they submitted the water sewer agreement, we said we should annex this property and bring it into the city. So they submitted an application, a petition to annex into the city by virtue of the encumbrance agreement that was there, which essentially says that when a property is contiguous and has signed an encumbrance agreement, they are required to annex at the city's discretion at the time that the city is ready to take the property into the city limits. This annexation is adjacent to the city limits on the north and south. And the existing future land use is low-density residential in the county. And the existing zoning in the county is low-density residential. It's compatible with the surrounding area, and there's no adverse impacts at this time. It is consistent with the strategic goal for growth management. And DRC recommended approval at their November 8 meeting for approval of ordinance 2019-46 and asked that the, and the planning commission also recommended approval of the ordinance and asked that the city council do the same. Moving on to the next item, which is related, is the comprehensive plan amendment, which is the corresponding item to the annexation. And the existing land use, as I said previous, was low-density residential. And the proposed future land use would also be low-density residential in the city. Again, it's compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to the city facilities at this time. Again, it is consistent with our strategic goal for growth management. DRC and staff recommends approval. And the planning commission at their meeting also recommended approval and to transmit to the Department of Economic Opportunity for further review. And the reason is that this is considered a large scale because it is greater than 10 acres. Moving on, the third item is the corresponding planned unit development zoning and preliminary master plan and final master plan for this project. Again, the same item as previously indicated, it's low-density residential in the county. And the proposed zoning would be PUD, planned unit development. The density would be approximately 3.5 dwelling units per acre. It's for 36 single-family detached dwelling units. Again, it's compatible with the surrounding area. And at this time, there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. Again, it is consistent with our growth management strategic goal. This is an image of the preliminary subdivision plan and final master plan that was approved by Osceola County. And it shows the layout of the project. It shows interconnection to, to both sides of the project, on the east and on the west, and shows the lock configuration for this project. Again, DRC recommends approval of ordinance 2019-48. And the planning commission also recommended approval of ordinance 2019-48 and asked that the city council do the same.
Is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to speak to this? Would any one in the audience like to speak to these three items? If not, we'll have discussion and motion by... Council beginning with item number four. Mr. Manzares, your line is on, is it?
No, sir, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Trace?
First, I just had one comment, and this is for our Public Works Director. Whenever we have...
Whenever we have neighborhoods like this that are smaller of size, I just want to make sure we're locating lift stations in a location and a depth to where they could take on some of the neighboring properties as well, so we're not maintaining, you know, a ton of lift stations as we as we develop some of these smaller parcels along Tenth Street because there's a ten-acre parcel next to it and some others. Oh, our utility director, sorry. Yes, our public services, interim public services director, yes, sorry.
Councilmember Askew?
Is this, I mean, this thing's been in front of us a bunch of times, but the, didn't the county approve the sidewalk going to the adjacent road up on Tenth Street? Was that part of the plan?
They should, yeah. Normally, they would, and there's-
I don't see it on that picture. Doesn't it go up to that next following road, that sidewalk? Isn't that what was approved through the county?
I don't know. This is what the county approved, unless they approved the offsite requirements I'd have to, I'd have to check and see, but this is what we receive of the county.
Is that something we can ask for? Is, what's going to happen is, our problem with Tenth Street is that there's going to be, and the sidewalk, and you're going to have a grassy knoll until the next spot. Well, actually, after that, there is no sidewalk until the next road, so is that something we want to look into? I think the, I believe the county approved it with a sidewalk extension to the, to the next road. No? Okay.
I don't know.
So we'll have a little bit of a sidewalk, and we'll have a break for a little while until somebody else develops it, and then they'll add the sidewalk in. Doesn't make good sense for our citizens to walk, but... Is that something we can ask for? Can we scoot it down to the next following road?
It's your call. You can ask for anything that you wish.
This is first reading, so staff could certainly approach-
Can we, can staff look into that and see if we can extend that sidewalk to the, to the following road, which would be, I believe, west?
So that's a request that you can ask in the PUD item.
Okay.
So, yes, okay.
Any other discussion by council? Could I entertain a motion for ordinance number two nineteen forty, forty-six?
So moved?
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace. Do I have a second?
A second, is it, with the possibility of that sidewalk extension?
Yeah, on the third item, yeah.
Okay. With that caveat, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
What's your pleasure regarding ordinance number two nineteen forty-seven? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Councilmember Askew?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
And then, could I entertain a motion for the adoption of ordinance number two nineteen dash forty-eight?
Just for the record, that also includes accepting the county's preliminary master plan and final master plan. Just, it's clear.
Is this where we'd throw in the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yes.
With those caveats regarding the cat, regarding the sidewalk, I'll have a, Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. How does their tree layout compare to ours? Because it looks pretty paltry with the trees in there. Could we add the caveat that they meet our tree ordinance?
Sure. Are you going to make a motion then?
I thought one was made already. Sorry.
Motion to approve with the tree caveat and the sidewalk extension.
Yeah, motion from Councilmember Askew. Do I have a second?
Second.
From Councilmember Matheny with the caveat, trees and sidewalks. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Item number seven.
Public, sorry, public hearing for resolution number two thousand nineteen dash two forty-five R. A resolution of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida amending resolution number two thousand nineteen dash one sixty-nine R, which adopted the fiscal, the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thou- twenty twenty budget for the city of Saint Cloud. Finding the city manager has certified there are prior year funds balances and/or current revenue available in the budget for additional projects and programs and various funds not included in the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional fundings in the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Good evening, Council. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. I'd like to present item two thousand nineteen dash two forty-five Romeo, which is the first budget amendment for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty. I'd like to share the components of that budget amendment, beginning with the general fund for a four thousand dollar increase for the donation of Walmart for the annual shop with a cop program. In the debt service fund, ninety-two thousand dollars in increase using the refunding bond proceeds of the two thousand ten B bonds, if you remember, to pay for the issuance cost. Moving on, the Stevens Plantation DSD Fund, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. This is a transfer of contingency funds coming from the Saint Cloud OUC inter-local fund in order to cover the upcoming March thirty-first, twenty twenty taxes due on all property still owned by the DSD. In the water fund, a million three hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollar increase. This is a transfer from the Water Impact Fee Fund, service debt-related, to an SRF loan, two thousand seven DW, originally budgeted in the water fee impact, so we're moving it to the water fund. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. No dent increase on the sewer fund, continuing on, on the first slide, sorry, for the header, use of budgetary contingency to pay for the Police Perseverance and Customer Service Division, seventy thousand. We've also using budgeted contingency to pay for the ice pigging portions of the city's water distribution sys- system coming in at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The use of a budgeted, budgeted contingency is also being used to replace a jet-vac vehicle for the Service Lines Division at three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This is, of course, as per the city section two dash two twelve. Staff recommends approval, and if there's any questions, please feel free.
Have any questions from council? First of all, there be any questions or discussion from the audience? Counsel, Mr. Meister?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm David Meister. I live in Stevens Plantation. I just want a clarification on the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for taxes to be paid by the city. As I understand it, that's for two thousand seventeen tax year. Is that correct? So you're still, got two years to go, but is that going to be paid out of next year's budget, then?
Ms. Colazo?
Unless we close on the property.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I just saw something and wanted a clarification. So the agenda item number F for the ice pigging is four hundred and seven thousand with, with, that's got ten percent contingency in there. Why is the budget amendment four fifty?
The budget amendment for the ice pigging is because the cost is four hundred and fifty coming in from the water fund, and the contingency is from contingency dollars not coming in from that fund, so it's separate.
But the total is four hundred and seven.
Correct, but four hundred and fifty is coming from the water fund. Contingency's been reported for the additional dollars there.
I'm not following. Where there's, there's, you've got forty-three thousand dollars more in your budget amendment than the item. Am I not following that?
No, you are.
Is the, is the four hundred and fifty include the contingency?
Well, it says the contingency is, the project is three seventy with ten percent contingency. The total cost is four oh seven on the agenda item.
When we, when we began the negotiations, we didn't know what the price of the contract. We had a general thing, so we, so when I was told I had, I had no money in the budget, I had to do a budget amendment, so we put, started a budget amendment at four fifty, knowing that would cover us. When we finally got everything negotiated, as you see, now it's four oh seven. So the budget amendment started down the path ahead of the contract, so.
So can we change the budget amendment to four oh seven?
You can do so as you like. In the event that something comes up higher, you do have that already budgeted in, so it's your choice.
Right. I'd like to change that to four oh seven.
Yeah.
With a ten percent contingency?
That already has ten in-
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, yeah, but four oh seven includes ten percent contingency.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Cooper?
Dan, can you tell me about the Stevens Plantation, that money that we're going to pay for tax, maybe and maybe not, if it's, it's paid early?
If you-
I, I understand we've got some parcels still left that the city, DSD, is going to own, and we're going to have to pay tax on some of those properties.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The biggest portion that's already been signed and-
As I recall, and I do not have the number in front of it, just for, for purposes of discussion, the, the two thousand and seventeen taxes, which would become due in March in the sense that would be the last opportunity the DSD would have to pay, would have to pay these taxes to avoid losing the property, frankly. That figure is about two hundred and, in the high two hundred thousands for that tax year alone on the hundred and forty-two acres that the state, that the DSD has currently on the contract. So if the property, if that property closes prior to March thirty, March thirty-first, then it is anticipated that all of the taxes owed on that property in the two thousand seventeen year, the two thousand eighteen year, and the two thousand and nineteen year taxes would be paid out of the closing of that property. So if that happens, then the budget amount that you just heard would actually go down.
Way down, that's what I-
There would still would be a budget amount to pay for the other property that is not going to close before March.
Okay. But the two thousand seventeen has already been, some citizens have already paid for it.
A tax certificate, a tax certificate has been bought for that property.
We're, we're paying fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, whatever percentage is.
Well, under the, under the-
And we'd have to pay that too, right? That's included.
If the property doesn't close before March thirty-first, yes, sir. If the property closes on that piece, then it'll come out of the sale proceeds from the buyer of the property, and the city would not have to pay that amount.
That's where I needed to be. Okay. I'd edit it all up. Thank you.
Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Matheny, would you like to make a motion with your amendment?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve with the revision to the ice pigging budget item to four hundred and seven thousand from four hundred and fifty thousand.
I'll second that.
A motion by Councilmember Matheny, a second by Councilmember Cooper with the ice pigging amendment. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
First of the item, right?
Public hearing for ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash two fifty-four R. A resolution of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud declaring certain real property located, consist, consisting of five parcels located at thirty-one forty-eight Bailey Road, twenty-two fifty Canoe Creek Road, and three non-addressed parcels on Canoe Creek Road, all in Saint Cloud, Florida as surplus property and approving the sale to Equity Investments LLC of a total of approximately fifty-one point zero two eight acres for one million seven hundred and fifty and authorizing the mayor and city manager to perform all acts necessary and appropriate to close on the property as provided herein.
Mr. Manzares?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the item that has been mentioned a couple times tonight. This is the companion item to the contract that the Stevens Plantation Dependence Special District got into for the sale of the hundred and forty-two acres of north property to Equity Investments. This contract, as we've talked about on several occasions, is related to fifty, approximately fifty-one plus acres that the city owns. That was, and that is adjacent to the Stevens Plantation project, and the purchase price is one point seven five, one million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As we've talked about before, this project, this proposed offer includes a ninety-day due diligence period, which is contingent upon two items. Number one, the approval of conceptual master plan for the overall development of the, this fifty-one acres plus the hundred and forty-two acres in Stevens. And also the, a developers' agreement with, between the, the city and the developer with regard to the construction of the connector road that's proposed for the project. It also includes a, a deposit amount of a total of a hundred thousand dollars prior to closing, and then a, with a closing of thirty, fifteen days after the expiration of the due diligence period. The milestones in the contract related to the, the potential buyers of due diligence include following, find, I'm sorry, submitting a plan for the conceptual master plan on or before January fifteenth of twenty twenty, and also they're submitting a, a proposed developers' agreement on or before the same date in twenty twenty, so that with, hopefully, those items could be approved by the end of the initial ninety-day period, and we can move forward. Again, this contract is a companion contract to the Stevens Plantation Dependence Special District, District contract, and if it's approved, then those contracts will move forward. If this one is not approved, then the dependent special district contract will, will be void.
Thank you. Would anyone with equity want to speak to this first? If not, Wayne Lubinski?
Thank you very much. Wayne Lubinski, thirty-two twenty-five Court Avenue. Got a couple of questions before I really get into the meat of this thing, is, is considering the, I guess it's the Canoe Creek Road facility that was tentatively slated for a public safety facility, if I understand? Is that, is that correct? Okay, that's what I thought.
Correct.
Believe it or not, back twenty-some years ago, I, I actually was part of building the public safety building, and unfortunately, when they designed that, they designed it for one story from a shopping center designer. When I see it, when I first came in this evening, I think the, the hospital was talking about safety and how great safety is and how it's built there, the place. We're, we're taking away the building of our public safety, as you know. We've, we're, we're expanding that area because crime has to be subdued. I thought that was a great spot for it. It's in the center, it's close to the hospital. Right now, where the police department is, I, and please, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think they can build a second or third story on that. Am I right? The congestion right there in Neptune is, it's interesting, let's say that. Canoe Creek Road is, is getting congested, but certainly it's in the center of town. I'm, I'm curious why we're selling property less than the going rate right now, and we still have a police situation that is getting crowded. And I, actually, I see the chief was here, and I'd probably like to hear from him, what does he think about this, the situation, and how grave is their department right now for space? I, you know, selling property less than the market value. And I, I guess it was brought up earlier, like Mr. Manz has said, this Equity Investments is pretty involved in our, in our community, in our council. I know three people did speak up that they, they did or they didn't, are involved in their campaign. Not that I need to bring that up, but I'm, I'm more focusing on why we're not supporting our public safety in that division. Has anybody given that a thought? Has it been a discussion? There was a question. Usually, if you've asked an answer, if anybody's got one, please jump in. Okay, well, I guess nobody wants to jump in.
Well, I, I'd like to tell you, I'd like to keep it where it was, and I was the one vote that said, leave it, not to sell it, so I'm the one lone, lone ranger.
Well, I appreciate your, your honesty about that. That's a shame, if four people prefer to, you know, sell property like this at a below market value and leave our, our police and fire. I don't know if it, if public safety was going to be, was, Bill, was there, Mr. Serge, was there, was there a fire department going to be involved in that public safety center? It was-
That's the plan.
That was the plan. Well, as, as an individual, I would see, I like to see that plan back on the table, and I like to see this shelved. Now, if it affects the one- Now, if it affects the 142 acres, I understand, I've been listening to some of that, and that does put a good reason why the city shouldn't be in the profit business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Meister.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm David Meister. I'm a resident of Stevens Plantation here in St. Cloud. I am against this the way it is currently written. You have five parcels you're selling. The one parcel everybody's concerned about is the 18.41 acres. And I can give you the parcel ID, but it's on the paperwork in front of you. Your Public Safety Advisory Committee asks you to hold off on this sale. The 18 acres was bought for a specific purpose, public safety building as well as a park. 2004, when I went to buy my property in St. Cloud, I was told Stevens Plantation would have their own park. We do not. And the closest park we'd have, you're not gonna make. You want to sell the property as surplus. You also want to surplus the police headquarters location, which you bought specifically for that purpose five years ago. I am against that. It is also below market value. The police department needs 10 acres. If you try to find 10 acres within the city limits, close to the downtown area, I guarantee you the price is gonna double on that. Not only are your building costs, you're also gonna delay the public safety building by two to three years if they have to go out and look for additional properties. I agree that you need to sell the Stevens Plantation property by the DSD, and I think you ought to take this one parcel off the table and renegotiate the contract with the builder. I think he might be willing to do that. I've seen the plot plan that he has. I think it is a great one, and it'd be a good addition to our city. But we need the public safety building. You need one for 50 years. You build a building, it's gonna take 50 years before it needs to be replaced. You need the 10 acres, not five acres, which I've heard suggested. You need 10 acres to allow for expansion. Your Public Safety Committee has given you a letter asking you to hold off on this. Please consider that before you vote. It's in our best interest as citizens of St. Cloud to have a viable public safety complex for our police department and fire. I'm concerned that you're gonna buy 200 acres for another park outside the downtown area. How are you gonna fund that? Yes, you might get a loan from OUC or someone else. But why are you gonna build a park out there when you have more pressing concern right now of a public safety complex building? Please reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Malhot.
Teresa Malhot, 2924 Cobree Circle, St. Cloud. A few years ago, I, oh, good evening, council. A few years ago, I sat in this very room and watched a promotional video for the Public Safety Command Center. It was, the presenters were Chief Gauntlet and then Fire Chief Bill Sturgeon. And I have tight purse strings, especially when it comes to my government. But I was sold on that idea. It included the police department, the fire department, dispatch center, Little League fields, and also a public park, a great addition to this city. We vitally needed that a few years ago. Now, today, with the addition of all the new homes and the people coming, it's more vitally needed today. And to sell it now seems irresponsible, given, and also, given that some people took campaign donations from the low bidder who you want to sell it to. That even makes you look untrustworthy. And I'm not accusing anybody of using that as a basis for their vote, but to the public, it doesn't look good. To me, it looks like a conflict of interest. The chairman of your Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee even wrote you all a letter saying that you shouldn't sell this property that was specifically for this reason. I agree with Sheriff Hansel, the chairman of that committee's letter to you, and asking you to table the sale until their work can be finished. The growth of the city with the additional, I don't know, 30,000 homes in the last few years, and without any needed infrastructure in place, and our overcrowded roads, selling it low bidder to a housing developer even seems more irresponsible. Our roads are overburdened, Canoe Creek, all the exits out of the city. I'm sure you all have been following on social media, people are mad around the news. With each additional residential development, the quality of life for your constituents and the existing taxpayers of this city go down. They go down in driving time, wait time, accidents every single day. And I have one other concern. The cost of replacing that piece of property for the Public Safety Command Center will just be more money than what you are gonna sell it to a low bidder to. I will hurry up and finish. It's hard to replace a good piece of property. That property was bought specifically and sold to the public that came at that time to the council meeting for this command center. So finally, I'm asking for you to table the sale too. Table the sale until your public, your Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee can do their work. I mean, that's what you all signed them for. And I'm asking you, for myself, to think twice about taking a low bidder price for this piece of property. Does this vote or sale represent a good steward of your constituents' interest and a good use of our taxpayer money to sell it to a low bidder? What will the replacement land cost? That's all I have. Thank you very much for listening.
John Rollins, 430 Florida Avenue. Been a resident here for 50 years. But I'm hearing this young lady mentioned about low bidder. Why would you sell something at the low bid price? The biggest business in the city is the city. You always try, a businessman tries to make the most money, not the least money in his operation. So why would you sell something at the low price? That doesn't make sense. I mean, you don't have to go to college and understand that. That's about two cents worth.
Thank you for your two cents. Ms. Crumpler.
Good evening again, Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. You've heard some very compelling arguments for, for an action opposite of the one you were leaning toward, are leaning toward. I hope you can take it in and modify your decision. You know, I'm a member of that committee, and it was a unanimous decision. We made that recommendation before, at the DSD meeting. It was ignored, then the committee wrote the letter, which I would very much like to have it read into the record, that letter. And one of the things it points out is the replacement cost for that property. Let's just say, on average, it's, you know, I don't know what it costs per acre, but it's gonna be probably four or five times that to replace it. And that ideal location, you're not gonna get that back. That is an ideal location. I also point out that, Mr. Sturgeon, how much money have we spent on doing a space study, a design study by the architectural firm on putting a piece, putting a design there for that property?
I don't recall right off the top of my head.
Roughly a couple hundred thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd say so. So we've already invested a couple hundred thousand with a very top-rate firm that has done a great needs analysis on what is required to have the proper building for both police and fire. And it's a building that can be, you know, sufficient for the future for a very long time. So anyway, I think the case has been made several times about the price. I don't know why you take a low bid. I will say, if your bidder backs out because you don't give them this piece of property, and I think "give" is the operative word, then I think you have another offer that you didn't accept from another company, Avex, I think it was called, and they offered you, I think, about $150,000 more, and they did preserve a little over six acres for the police and fire department. I have a feeling, if you go back and say, "We need 10 and not just six," they'd probably be willing to work with that, but they were not given that opportunity. Okay, and I think that's a very important point. So if you lose this bidder, and you know, that seems to bother you, I think the bondholder ought to be happy to get another $150,000. And I know every firefighter, every police officer, and all their staff would be very grateful if you would actually listen to their needs. You cannot find another piece of property in a reasonable amount of time. If you do that, it's gonna cost us another three years, and it's gonna cost, if we started today, it would be three years before we built that building. And you need to understand that. The other thing I would say is that it's not surplus. That's an absolute falsehood. To call that surplus is nothing but a lie. And I don't care what your reasoning is, and I don't care why you want Mr. Lubinski to have it. It is not surplus property. End of story.
Would anyone else like to speak to the signer? Please state your name and address for the record.
Cloudy Delacruz, 4311 Mohawk Court. I'm part of the advisory committee. And I am very curious to know what's the urgency of selling that property? If we, as a board, were trying to come up with ideas, we're trying to work together as a team to come up with a plan to propose to you guys, what's the urgency of selling that property? I wanna know.
You have anything else?
That's all.
Thank you.
Are you looking for an answer?
Yeah.
I could tell you that I, for me, I'm not in a hurry to sell it. So the others, you'll have to ask the question.
So for the others, what's the urgency? I want an answer. I wanna know, what's the urgency on selling that property? Why can't it be tabled until we're done?
Mayor, would you like to have public comment, and then staff can answer all the questions that have been asked?
Do you have any other pub, any other comment?
No, that's all.
He'll let you.
Thank you.
Darren Davis, 2755 Mercedes. A few years ago, y'all were working on Old Hickory, and y'all were promoting Old Hickory subdivision to give you all, I think it was 20 acres, for a line services building. And you were pushing and shoving, trying to get them to give up a piece so you could move it away from the hospital. Well, why don't you move the line services building over to the Canoe Creek site, put the police and the fire EMS service building there with it, and use the property, and with money you get from the line services building beside the hospital, do your construction? Because the hospital wants that property, don't they? That's been the talk for, ever since the property went in, that they wanted that property to expand the hospital. Well, why don't you all do the swap and get your money out of the hospital and put it on Canoe Creek? And I can't see why you'd sell a piece of property on Canoe Creek Road, that close to town, for $34,000 and change, then turn around and go out on Jones Road and buy a piece of property out there for $26,000 an acre. There is no way that that's even close to be an equal value of property. It's $8,000 difference for road front, right on the edge of town, and 10 miles up the road. It's barely even inside the city area. Why don't you take the $5 million you're gonna spend there and put it over there? It would be best for the taxpayers, I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm John Rollins, 430 Florida Avenue. I wanna give you a little history. This building that you're sitting in today, the plaque outside's got my name on it. We built this building at no additional cost to the taxpayer in this community. When we've asked the city manager to help us plan a city hall, he went to work. We got the plans together, we decided what we're gonna do. And then we had to worry, well, how much do we have to raise the taxes to pay for it? And you know what he does to us? He puts his hand up here with a zero on it. What do you mean, where are we gonna get all this money? Says, "I did my research. I checked all our endeavors, that was coming along, that was being satisfied. We'll just keep it going. We don't have to go to the taxpayer." Now, that's running a business properly. Don't go, don't keep digging into our pockets and sell things that are lost. Let's make a profit, make this a good, solid community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not will have discussion or motion by council, will recognize Mr. Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, at the DSD meeting, I made my recommendation. The council gave direction. One of the things we have done, we've met with Mr. Lubinski. He is still not committed, but he still wants to be sitting at the table and have a discussion about the potential of still putting a public safety complex on that property. My staff and I fully understand our need to improve public safety. In fact, everybody knows my background. Over 35 years in public safety, I would consider myself an expert in public safety. Part of our strategic plan is to provide public safety infrastructure. And our mission statement is to provide a safe and healthy environment, manage our resources, and plan for the future. As you know, the last three years, I've worked with a structurally imbalanced budget. The city has been strapped with debt that none of us caused, and we're still paying. It's gonna be difficult for me to sit here and look you in the face and tell you that we can afford, at this time, a public safety complex in excess of $40 million. I can't do that in good conscience. However, I do know we have needs. Both our fire stations need to be replaced. We have one. I need a new station to maintain a level of service and a quality of life here in our community. My police chief and my fire chief are both experts in public safety, and they understand the needs of our community. We've asked for the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, and they're doing good work. And they haven't finished their job yet. I understand where you're coming from. You have a difficult decision. That's why you were elected. And my job, because you've appointed me to be your city manager, is to give you financial and fiduciary advice. And that's what I'm doing tonight. It's up to you whether you wanna sell the property or not. But I can tell you, we're looking at other options. That's not the only option on the table. I've directed staff, we have an option, the, Mr. Davis talked about joint use facility. As you know, we're talking with OUC about leasing space for their new facility out east for our lines division and our utilities. That leaves that space open there, right by the hospital, but it is in the MAC, so I've got concerns with that. But we are continuing to look, and I just wanted to let you know that, you know, my goal is to continue that level of service and quality of life. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So I wanna thank everybody for coming tonight to give your comments and being involved. I know, from my perspective, I think every single person up here on the council wants to do what's best for public safety, and I think we've reflected that in our voting record over and over again, that we do everything we can to support the public safety issue. We also have a lot of pushes on us to try to, like, get rid of the DSD property. You know, everybody's like, sell the property, sell the property, get out from under the property. So we did endeavor to do this this year. We put out, I don't know, it was in an RFQ, but we put out a notice to the public. We received a bunch of bids. So for everybody to keep saying that we're taking the lowest bid, lowest bid, lowest bid, that's a little bit, a little bit of the story. Is when you looked at the land use breakdown, when you looked at the amount of commercial, I think it was very short-sighted to go, we're gonna take something for $175,000 more, when it had just houses. It was just houses. It didn't have hardly any commercial. You know, we were looking at the long-term investment in the community. So also, when we were doing our, with the last meeting that I was at for the council, when we talked about this property, I believe that what the city manager has said, that they were willing to work with us on a public safety complex site on the property. So I know that he's saying, we haven't come to a resolution on that, so I think we should hold off on approving this without knowing, like, what those details are. I mean, 'cause once we approve it, you're kinda like negotiating in arrears. I know the question came up about what's the urgency, because I brought that up too, when we were going through this back and forth, like, why are we, like, you know, rushing through this when we need to really, like, take our time and understand, like, all of the parameters? And it was because of the tax bill being due, was why we were trying to expedite things through. And my comment was, again, I think you're, like, cutting off your nose to spite your face to make a quick decision for a tax bill. You know, you need to look at the long-term effects of the impact. You know, based on the. You know, based on the submittals that we received, we felt that this was the best submittal for the city overall, when you took everything into consideration, not just the price point. Now, the, the money to the DSD doesn't come to the city. So the money for the DSD property does not come to the city, period. That goes back to the bondholders. So really, the only property that we're talking about that money comes to the city is this property that's on the agenda today. So I don't know if Equity wants to come up and kind of talk about the public safety complex, to see where we are with that, or if we have any movement on it, or what conversations have been had. I don't know.
Reece Berlinski, 4775 Canoe Creek Road. You have some questions?
Well, at the last, at the last council meeting when we talked about this, or maybe it was the DSD meeting, I don't know, we have to meet on it multiple times. But the last meeting that I was at on this, there was, I thought you were willing at the end of the meeting to like, look at the public safety complex on the property.
We said that we'd be, we'd entertain to sit down and talk to staff about possibilities of being involved in the, in the public safety facility, whether it's on our property or somebody, or somewhere else, facilitating a search for other properties if necessary. And we've met with, with the city manager and the police chief, and we, we had about an hour conversation about that. And, and we're basically, you know, in the process of, if you approve this tonight, we're in the process of submitting our application and having further discussions. I, I don't, that's where we were last time. We, 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 we're citizens of the community. We, we understand the public safety issue. We're just, we were just responding to an offering to buy property and, and you know, the police, you know, if it's, if it's an issue, we're glad to help solve it. The basis of our reason to not include the public safety facility in our offering was that we were, we were never presented with anything to, to understand how that would work. We've heard six acres, we've heard 16 acres, we've heard 10 acres tonight. We've never really understood what the offering or the ask was. You know, is there a facility planned? Is there, how far along is the facility discussion? We've never been included in that. With the exception of the first meeting I had with the city manager, and we had, we had a good, we had a good discussion about it. So that's, that's really kind of where we're at. We're certainly, I got, I got, you know, you know me, I have five grandsons and a great, great granddaughter that live in this community and family. So I, I, I first want to step up and say, I'd love to see, you know, a public safety facility in the right place. I don't know what the circumstances was for selling the property. We just made the offer and, and would like to buy it under our conditions and terms.
So maybe Mr. Ranzares can explain this. Why is the city property going through and not the DSD on the same agenda item?
It's owned separately.
I'm sorry, say.
So this is just the city property?
You've already, again, they're separate entities, and they require separate meetings to deal with them. The DSD agreement has already been approved.
Okay.
That was already approved to sell the 142 acres to Equity Investments.
Oh, that's the meeting I missed.
You weren't at the meeting, that's correct. So that was, so this is the second agreement that would address the balance of it.
Right.
And both of the agreements, as I said earlier, they are contingent upon approval of both agreements.
So is it possible to postpone this approval to get further understanding on the public safety complex? Would that be a possibility?
The timeline is, has really been established by
By the city?
By the city because of the
The taxes.
The tax issues, so.
Yeah, we, we were, we've talked about this before, and we just, we mentioned it earlier. The, if the property does not close sometime in, in this coming spring, the city will have to spend close to $300,000, additional taxpayer dollars to pay the, to pay the taxes.
But if we approve this tonight, there's really, we can't really negotiate, you know, anymore?
Well, you, if you approve it the way it is right now, then, then really, the, if as long as the buyer does what, does what they're supposed to do, then yes, it'll, it'll go without, it potentially would go without a public safety complex in it, if that's what you're concerned about.
But there's no meeting at the mines right now. That's what I'm saying. I think
Yeah, I'd like to postpone it.
Well, yeah. I mean, that's why it's in front of you, Mr. Cooper. It's, it's in front of you for you as the council to decide whether you want to accept the offer from this potential buyer. So if, if you accept it, then you have a meeting in the mines. If you don't, then we're, we're back to the drawing board.
Councilmember Othenee?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Andre, could I give you this and let you put this on the screen where I could see it? Everybody could see this. You'd put that right there? I think you're well, well aware of what this is. If you'll come up to the front podium there and, can you get it where I can see it? There, make it a little bit smaller where you can see that there. My spelling's not real good. So, anyway. Andre, could I get you to come up to the front there? All right, that's the Charter School, right across from the Wawa, east of the city. Old Hickory. That's 6.46 acres. 1.49 million, that was what it was paid for. That's $230,650 per acre, per acre. And we're going to take and sell this over here for $37,000, $37,000 per acre? Something ain't even right here. I mean, these, these college education people here, I just don't understand this. I mean, if we're going to give it away, you're, you're getting nickel and dimes for what, what it's worth. I mean, you, the citizens can see that. I mean, you're, you're out here in the audience and you look and see, and I went and did a little history and found that, and that's current, right? How long's that been, that they paid for that? Six months, a year ago? It's pretty current, recent. So if I looked at that and I said, wow, that's, that's, that's a lot of money that they paid for 6.49 acres, and then you're going to give all this away for a million, million seven for 50 some acres? That, for $37,000 per acre? That's cheap, cheap. All right, let me, let me start out, and I'm going to read something. I, I, I have two buildable lots in St. Cloud. I own a 75-foot by 150-foot lot, and I also own a 50-foot by 150-foot lot. I would not even entertain the thought of selling the 50-foot lot for $37,000. I purchased it, the 50-foot lot, close to 10 years ago. I paid more than that. Right now, it's on the assessed value with the property tax of almost $50,000 for a 50-foot lot. And you're going to give an acre for $37,000. That doesn't compute to me. If the city is going to sell the acreage, which was earmarked for the public safety complex at the price of approximately $37,000 per acre, this does not make us a good sense or, or any reason that I can see. This property has no liens and owned free and clear by the city of St. Cloud. If the, if the sale is final of the city of St. Cloud, you're going to have to purchase more property at a price tag of approximately $200,000 per acre. I've done some research, and that's pretty much where it's at. Does this make sense? I don't think so. Let me finish my second. There you go. We, as council members, appointed citizens to the Public Safety Task Force to give us the recommendations. When Bob Hansel spoke at the last meeting, he told us it was the unanimous decision of the task force for the city to keep the 47 acres unanimously. So at the later date, we, we, we could proceed to purchase of our, our new police and fire facilities. Yet for some reason, four council members decided to give it away for $37,000 per acre. Does that make good sense, citizens of St. Cloud? Thank you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to speak to this issue.
May I interrupt? Do I still need to be here?
Yes.
I'm not really sure why I was up here, and respectfully, I was not involved in any negotiations.
No, you are not. I just called you up because I wanted to make sure that you knew that that was how recently it was. Thank you, sir.
You know, first of all, you know, I don't appreciate your comments, Mr. Cooper, saying we're giving anything away. We set this out for bids. We had multiple bids. This is what the market said all the property was worth. We had estimates on the property. And the bids that came in were based on basically what the estimates were for the property. I'd also like to just make a comment about my relationship with Equity. You know, the first time this thing came up for sale, Equity and Galleria presented us two options. And I went with the Galleria because I felt that was the best offer that was being proposed. And the reason I went with Equity this time, because looking at all the offers that had been laid on the table, I felt that the Equity offer was the best offer for our city. AVEX was proposing 950 units on that property. I mean, it would be wall-to-wall houses. They were proposing for commercial, 4.1 acres would be set aside for commercial. Whereas Equity was proposing for their units, 550 units, almost half of the amount of traffic that would be on the Canoe Creek Road, impacting all the area there. Plus, they were proposing 15.31 acres of commercial, almost three to four times more commercial. I felt like the amount of commercial that was in, just in and of itself, if it was developed, would more, more, multi-times make up the small difference in the prices, those two prices that were offered us. The problem that I felt with the AVEX offer was that, you know, it's one thing to have a, this, this arrangement, public-private arrangement, and you're letting someone privately build your building. You don't own the building. They don't build those buildings for nothing. They don't lease them for nothing. They lease them for an awful lot of money, so they can get their money back and pay for the property and to pay for the building at a profit, or they won't build it. And, and for us to sit here and argue and say, well, AVEX is going to go build a safety building, you, you haven't done your homework. That's not the way it works. What, and even if they move forward, we don't have the money that it would cost to lease a 30, $40 million building. You know, what I'm in favor of is I think there's a better, you know, when there's a, a need, a necessity, I think there's a better way. I feel like we can come up with better ideas than we have. I've been sitting here, going on almost, will be four years, and all we have done is what we're fixing to do right now, because we've, this was the sense of urgency. We're fixing to have to pay out another close to $400,000 in taxes again. And this wasn't our fault. And I can't help it that we have a $30 million debt, or a little bit less than that, on a road that previous councils felt was a good idea to build. We have to service that also. And it just, I just think there's a better way. And I just felt, looking at the offers that were offered, and I believe that was the conclusion that the rest, the majority of the council had come to, was that the Equity property was a much better deal for the residents of our city and would provide far more commercial income in the future. And it just made financial sense to do that. If the council wants to delay this process, they certainly will to do that. But the urgency was try to save some additional money that would have more than made up the difference in the two prices. Do we have any other discussion from council?
We've got some people who'd like to speak.
We've already had public comment.
Well, I got a question for you. Y'all tasked me last year, before the first of the year, to get green belt for that property. And we did it. So how can the taxes on it be 300,000?
Three years ago?
No. We've had this discussion before. Again, there's a lot of misinformation, misunderstanding about this project. Respectfully, as everybody in the audience, the city council and the DSD have been working with this for, since 2003. To say that the $200,000 is a tax-only issue is not it. The property is part of the Stevens Plantation Community Development District. The Community Development District puts assessments on the property. They are not property taxes. They are special assessments associated with the Community Development District. The ad valorem tax piece has, has been reduced in about, about a year or so ago, when the Stevens Plantation Department Special District agreed to, entered into a lease agreement to have an individual put cattle on that property and to get an agriculture exemption. That reduced, as I recall, that reduced the total tax bill, which is a couple hundred thousand dollars a year when you include the assessments, the total bill that is sent, by I think about $60,000, because that was the ad valorem piece of it. The rest of it is Community Development District assessments that are not affected by an agricultural classification for the property. So that's the answer to that question.
Yeah. But that's only on the other 130-some acres. That ain't on the 51 acres.
There's no taxes on the 51 acres.
That's right. So you're saying the taxes, the 300,000, no, it isn't on this property, it's on the other piece. So you're forcing this sale
That's why we're selling the whole issue.
Yeah, but it's forcing the sale of this property for the taxes, but it ain't even nothing to do with this property.
That's right.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
I'd like to, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight to voice their concerns with the, with the sale of this property and participating in your local government. I'd like to discuss kind of two separate matters with this. One is the, the two, two offers that we had, or the DSD had and, and discussed. And then the other is the public safety com, complex. Some history on the Stevens North sale, or at least since I've been on council. DSD was under contract for almost a year with a developer that was going to develop the property and something amazing, and that fell through. They didn't really have much wherewithal to get that, that project done. So DSD went out for a second try to find a developer to develop this property, put it back on the tax roll. With the second go at this, we used the services of a broker to go out to the marketplace, select the best offer, and present all those offers to the DSD and the city council. From, from that, we had six offers presented to us, varying terms, varying pricing, all had, all had their merits. And then from there, the DSD shortlisted three of the proposals, and for them to come back with their best and final offer. One of those groups decided not to go back with that last round of offers. So there were, there were two offers that were shortlisted and came back. To echo some of everyone's comments here, that the, the selection for, between those final two, had to do with a bunch of merits, not just the price. The selected offer had seven acres more commercial and 300 less units than the other. So it, it focused more on tax generating properties for commercial instead of residential. Closing timing for both of those were also very different. The selected offer had a closing before the March 31st tax, tax bill due for the DSD bonds. From, with respect to the, the pricing of the two offers, as has been, as has been stated before, the DSD property, none of that revenue comes back to the city. All of that goes to pay back the bonds. From the city portion, those, those funds go to pay back what was used to purchase From the city portion, those funds go to pay back what was used to purchase that property. Impact fee funds from parks and public safety were used to buy that property, so all of those funds have to go back to those impact fee accounts because it was those impact fees that paid for it, not citizen taxpayer dollars. It was impact fee funds. So, you know, with respect to the Public Safety Complex, I agree that we need either an expanded or a new Public Safety Complex. The one now is getting to be obsolete, but when we put these facilities in place, they need to be in locations that are the best location and not just property that we have. Putting those facilities in the right location means that response times are lower because access is better. We don't have to add traffic lights after the fact like we've had to do on a couple of our facilities. So, it ends up being cheaper in the long run to put it in the right location and not just the location that we have. So, to council, part of my thought process here is if we move forward with the sale of this property, I think that to alleviate the concerns with the Public Safety Complex, I think if we go to contract within the first forty-five days of the inspection period, we have the city manager and staff negotiate with the developer to withhold six to ten acres of the property or find other suitable locations that would be better suited for a Public Safety Complex before we go down the road with this. So, instead of just continuing it, go to contract with a term that we have to find a better location on the property or off this property for a Public Safety Complex. And then if we can't figure it out in forty-five days, contract terminates, and we move on and end up having to pay the tax bill. So, it's just kind of the in-between of the two situations that we have here.
Councilman Matheny.
Thank you. I like that idea, but I just, I'm not sure. Do we know, like, how many acres we actually need? I mean--
So, I said six to ten.
I know, but is ten even enough? I don't know. Like, do we have an acreage?
No. No.
Thank you. Pete Gaunt, Chief of Police. And a lot of this swirls around your Public Safety officials, and I'll elaborate. Can I go back a few years? We started this process in identifying the needs some five-and-a-half years ago. I have a library full of documents that have been presented to council and citizens to the needs of our Public Safety expansion. Mr. Sturgeon and I stood shoulder to shoulder here in front of council, several councils, to explain the needs. Looking at the long-term growth as the number-one fastest-growing county in the country and what, the ninth-fastest growing, we have critical needs. As I enter my fortieth year in this business, I can tell you with all my experience, this is a critical need going forward. We have done our due diligence. We have a committee in place of some great people in the community that want to come forward. Their presentation will be forthcoming in the first part of January, probably January sixteenth, to come to council in a workshop format to provide counsel with their concepts and ideas. We have been very forthcoming and very transparent with the committee, and I think all of them can elaborate on that. We've given them overviews on staffing levels, concerns, and space allocation needs for police and fire. We have done due diligence as far as the specifics with design ideas and concepts. For the public safety structure, depending on which structure is selected, our expert, ADG, which is Architect Design Group, who has been on contract for some time, is a nationally-renowned organization who does nothing but design and create public safety complexes, police stations, fire stations, public safety facilities, the best in the business, that's why they were selected. It is their professional opinion, and that's what they presented during that presentation to the council, is this facility is recommended at twelve acres. We threw the sixteen acres out there if, in fact, drainage was a problem. Drainage was going to be a problem, we had to be able to expand to that. That property was bought where the existing property is now, and we paid about one-point-one million dollars five, over five years ago for the property with it because of its central location. If you look at where that property is in the city limits of St. Cloud, it is almost dead-center, north to southeast to west. This is a strategic location. We bought it virtually on a short sale and got a tremendous deal back then on the property, and it was to be split between police at that time and a park. And it sat because at the time, we knew we just wanted to put the park away or put the property away so that we, when the timing was right and the city could afford to do so, there we were. We had the property, and it was in a great location. So, as we move forward, this presentation will come to you. But to answer the question as far as the size of the property, depending on what is built and how it's built, and I say that because if it's on this property, I would estimate it to be about twelve acres is what we need with drainage to be able to have that, because what you're talking about is a Public Safety Complex. It's a police facility, police administration, fire administration potentially. We have a world-class nine-one-one center in this community that needs to be expanded desperately. We have an emergency operation facility that needs to be added to it. We have code enforcement staff and a lot of other ancillary pieces of equipment and things that we do now. Our facility now is five, little over five acres, and we are landlocked, and we are completely out of room. And we're making do until which time as we can afford. Mr. Sturgeon's been terrific about working with us and understanding what our needs are, but we're doing our homework slowly to bring forward this need. All I can tell you is that the property is needed desperately, and if we did get approval to move forward with design, funding, everything else, we're still years down the road from seeing a finished product. So, the fiscal impact is going to be very small at first, and we'll have to get to those long-term financial decisions as time goes on. So, if you have any additional questions, I can certainly answer it, but I want to be able to provide some history there as to why we're going where we're going.
Councilman Raskin.
Yeah, you've definitely brought that project in front of us more than once, and I can't remember, what's the square footage that we were looking for? I know you're talking acres, but what's the square footage of the building we're trying to get?
What we have to remind ourselves is, here's the problem. Our building right now, as we know it as a police facility, was built in nineteen ninety-nine. It's a beautiful building. Aesthetically, it's nice. You'd go in it, because we take very good care of it, we take great pride in it. It's when the residents' population in St. Cloud had nineteen thousand residents. We've long out-expanded that. We've commandeered every closet we possibly can. The experts have said, and we're calling this same expert team back to meet with us next week to do an updated spatial allocation review of what we've already done for the police department, and set forth a spatial allocation review for the fire department as well, both their administrative space needs and potentially what their needs would be for future fire stations and what those needs would be. The building itself, the Public Safety Building, would be estimated, because you have to remember, we're building a forever building. We're building a building that's fifty-plus years. I wouldn't anticipate, if it's done correctly, you would never have to build another police facility in this city ever again. It's an expensive process. That building is probably estimated, with everything we just talked about putting in it, in the neighborhood of sixty thousand square feet under roof, along with some outstanding buildings to put equipment in, because we have an awful lot of police emergency response equipment has to be housed as well. And with that, the technology and everything else has to go in there with it, too. So, it's a building that we wouldn't build completely out. It would be shelved. It would, maybe one floor wouldn't even be built in, but it would be able to be built in for the future, but we're going to have to do it correctly. And what our designers are telling us, the longer we wait, the higher the price tag goes up, construction costs are getting outrageous these days.
Thank you. Any other question? Thank you, Chief. Any other discussion from the council? I'm curious, Mr. Berlinski, if we postpone the approval of this, how will that impact your offer?
I walk slow so I could think about it for a minute. You know, I guess we've been kind of running on a timeframe that we were thinking was the city's timeframe, and really, we just responded to an offering and to buy some property.
Well, that was one of the reasons it was attractive about your offer is that you sped up the timeline so we don't end up with another Galleria project that goes nowhere.
I don't know how to, I'm not too sure I know how to answer that, Mayor. I think it's, you know, it's obviously important, and we hear from everybody here, we've heard it for a long time. As a citizen, I know it's a needed, you know, issue. I'm just, I'm having a complicated understanding how it's, I'm here to talk about buying a piece of property and all suddenly the Public Safety Facility, which, you know, I've been here and has needed for many years, so all suddenly, why is it so urgent now that it hasn't been in the last couple of years? And it's because it continues to be talked about and nothing done about it, and I want to help solve the problem if I can. I'm just not too sure how I can. I think, you know, there's a lot of misconceptions here tonight. You know, everybody has to understand that, you know, buying this property comes with a one-point-two-million-dollar debt that, you know, that we take responsibility for the day one when we buy the DSD land and all the, and we take that obligation off the city, and we have that obligation to maintain, and if we happen to own it for ten years like y'all have, you know what the debt requirement is. So, we're taking the risk, so we have to consider all that, and I've just never, nobody's ever came to me and sat down and said, "Hey, here's what we want to do." It's always been, we got a public, we need a public safety facility, and okay, we, you know, we have a great idea, but nobody's ever approached us about anything other than leaving a piece of land. And we just finished a project in Pasco County that we negotiated a school at a park under the same circumstance. There was a, the county had not built a park facility in that county for like twenty-five years, and we sat down at the table and we talked about how to make this happen as a group, not only as developers and citizens of the community, but as a developer who, you know, who is helping develop the property, and we came up with a solution for it to happen. We're perfectly happy to be part of the solution. I just don't know how to do it when I don't understand it. And so, we responded to an offering to buy a piece of property. That's what we offered. Whether you believe it's the right price or not, it was our price based on all the factors that we had to deal with, which was assuming, you know, the debt for the DSD, you know, helping pay, you know, pay that debt off as quick as possible, you know, believing that we could close this thing in an earlier date than anybody else because we know the property. So, all those factors were part of what we believed we could come to the table, and that's a long answer.
Well, my question is, would you be willing, if we postponed this resolution here, to at least just sit down and negotiate with the city and explore some possibilities of, you know, could you be part of the solution?
I certainly think we could talk about it.
Would you not?
I think we could talk about it, but you have to understand that the timeframe is going to change.
I understand.
And I think, you know, the time, that means that, you know, we were under your timeframe, and we're, you know, if there's a forty-five-day, I think forty-five days is probably too long. I think if we're going to, if we're going to go this direction, and I would, I'm not agreeing to it, I don't think it's the right direction for us, but if you're, I don't think forty-five days is the right amount. If you want to try to hold this conversation, I think it's more like a week or two, and that's it, because I don't want to continue to spend our dollars and make promises to other people that, you know, that forty-five days down the road, just because I don't agree to something, then you can pull it, and y'all can go and do what you want to do. Okay.
Councilman Matheny.
Thank you. So, based on that, would you be willing, oh, I'm sorry, Chuck, do you want to go?
Go ahead, I didn't see it.
I'll do that.
I just heard a click.
Five minutes ago. Thank you, sir. Mr. Berlinski, I have a quick question. Would you entertain the notion to maybe carve out sixteen acres of this fifty-one acres and leave it alone, give it to the city, and let's move on forward? Is that a possibility that you're, let's, hold on, that you and the city manager, attorney, your people, let's get it and move forward? We need something hard, concrete, where we're going to move back and forward. And if you're not going to talk about it, and you're not, you're saying, "Well, we've got to hear something from them." Well, let's get together, and the two of you sit down and start talking quick, because, you know.
Our offer was under the evaluation of that, when the assumption of the debt on the DSD land required additional land for us to make that work. And so, we made the offer. When the offering came out, and they made the offering for the additional land, then it made sense for us to make the offer. If you're asking us for the same price to carve out sixteen acres, then I don't think it works for us.
No, I'm talking about if you take that amount of money at thirty-seven thousand dollars per acre, sixteen acres, carve that money out, you pay the difference or whatever. I'm just asking a question. One council member's asking you a question. Could you do that? Or could you think about it?
No, we're willing to sit down. We've said this, we're willing to sit down about it, but I think there needs to be some timeframe to get this discussed, or let's move on.
Well, I think everybody's in a timeframe that we need to change and sit down and figure it out before we just all of a sudden tonight say we're going to do it or not do it. I don't want to be unfair to you. I'd like to be, get something built there, and let's get it sold. I'd like to get it sold, but at the same time, we need a safety complex, and it desperately needs to be there.
Over the years, I've been involved in several instances where a public entity has asked me to reserve land inside of a property that still sits fallow today, and so, you know, I guess we, I happen to be cursed in the sense that I live here and understand the dynamics of this project. I mean, you know, so maybe that's the downfall from my side. I mean, I understand that, you know, there's still a long way to go to build this facility.
Yes, sir.
If, you know, if you even can. I mean, I know the debt that you have already. So, by having that knowledge, and maybe I'm at a disadvantage in this case, because I understand where you're sitting today, and it's hard for me to sit here and say, "I can't, I don't want a public safety facility to be built," but I'm just a businessman, you know, trying to make a living, and there are certain factors that will determine that. I think sitting down and talking about it's fine, but if we're going to talk about it, it needs to be very quickly, because, you know, we both need to move on one way or the other.
Councilman Matheny.
Thank you. So, based on what you just said, would you prefer to do what Mr. Trace suggested, where we move forward with this, but we put a timeframe in there to sit down with the city manager and the police chief and the fire chief, and, you know, we put twenty days or whatever timeframe in there to come up with something that makes everybody happy? If not, the deal is off the table, or would you rather postpone it? But, I mean, does it, I think we would rather approve it tonight if we can with that condition because that keeps it in the timeframe for the taxes. It like checks both boxes there, if you would be amenable to that.
Mr. Ranzares, can you help us?
Well, the only thing about that, and I understand what you're trying to do, I don't know what that would do to the one contingency that's in the agreement with regard to the concept plan. Obviously, if they, if they are, they have a concept plan that's based on their full, complete use without a Public Safety Facility of approximately a hundred and ninety acres. So, they'd have to go back to the drawing board and redraw it based on once staff and Mr. Berlinski's group even reached an agreement. So, the timeframe that we had worked for to hopefully get the conceptual master plan back in front of the City Council and the proposed developer's agreement or mobility fee credit agreement would probably be pushed back, so we probably would come up tight on that ninety-day due diligence period. So, you made the way of the closing still, but I don't know.
Dan, I got one question. If this is going to push it a little further, how many, how many years have we been paying taxes? We've been, how many years just keep, been paying the half-million dollars or three-quarters of a million dollars tax bill? I mean, how many years, just ballpark? You don't have to tell me exactly. I mean, how many years, just, just ballpark. You don't have to tell me exact.
Ballpark?
Yeah, how many years?
I don't know if I can tell you.
2013, we started paying.
Twenty, well.
Okay, and we've been three, three and a year, all constantly.
This property has been accruing taxes since 2003. So when it was acquired, so, and so it has had it. Now, the assessments, the property taxes, as I tried to explain earlier, the ad valorem taxes on the Stevens property were low for the beginning part because the community development district wasn't in place. And it wasn't until the infrastructure was built that the CDD assessments were put in place and those bonds were out there. But it, it, and those amounts have been paid for several years now.
Okay, but couldn't we, even if this thing starts to work out and the city could get 16 acres carved out or whatever, and he could pay the tax, three years taxes when he pays the final bill, even if it's past the June deadline to pay the tax bill, we'll, we'll pay the late penalties and still keep going.
That's not the way it works in this case, Mr. Cooper.
That's a question.
There's a, the, the properties are, the properties currently, the Stevens DSD properties have tax, outstanding taxes that go back three years and less. Those three-year outstanding taxes are held by, held by certificates by investors, tax certificates. After three years, if the taxes remain unpaid, they have the right to apply for a tax deed. If they apply for a tax deed and the certificates are not paid, then those investors get ownership of the property. So if you have to pay, if you don't pay the third year, the oldest third year, then you are in risk of having a tax deed issued and the property, you wouldn't have to worry about selling it to anybody because the DSD wouldn't own it anymore. So that's been the, that's been the mechanism to do that. So the city has been funding, and I recognize that we've had this discussion before, that this is not the creation of this council. However, it is where, it is how this project has developed due to a lot of factors, most particularly the,
The buck stops here.
Most particularly the, you know, the unexpected collapse of the, of the residential market and economy several years ago. So the, the bottom line is that if you don't, if the, if this deal does not close by sometime around where we're talking about, in early spring, then, as I said earlier, the city would have to fund the tax for that oldest tax certificate, which is, I believe, about close to $280,000 on that piece. If this, with regard to this deal. You're still going to have to pay for some other pieces because those aren't part of, those aren't going to close.
The separate pieces, yeah. I understand.
Do you have anything else for us, Mr. Balinski?
No.
Thanks, sir. And just, Mr. Mayor, if I just, just remind the council of this all, and I think Mr. Balinski kind of mentioned it earlier. The inclusion of this, of the city piece that's before you today was done as essentially an enhancement to the overall project to provide a prospective buyer with more opportunity to generate, to basically get a better rate of return on their investment. That's what, that's why it was placed in there to deal with it. Mr. Trace, Mr. Trace mentioned the Galleria project. The Galleria project included the sale of this property. It included it. That Galleria project was for the entire 190 acres. It was approved by the council to sell to the Galleria folks at the time, and it was on the contract until they backed out of it. And so.
But the public safety complex was in that agreement.
There was a impact fee credit agreement back behind and associated with the public, that's correct. There was. And so there was potential for, for, to be able to deal with. So it's always been, the, the idea and the reason, and part of the reason why staff was doing this at the time was because the folks in the marketplace were telling us, you need to do something more to enhance this 142 acres to make it marketable.
So it got curved away, so the complex is just got swept away?
Well, not in the Galleria deal, it was included as part of the deal.
No, no, after that, after that.
No, I think as Mr. Sturgeon pointed out, the city looked at other options to, to address the potential site for the police department and the public safety complex and deal with it, to address, to address it.
Anything else for me?
I don't think we have anything else. Mr. Balinski.
Well, I'm kind of, what's the pleasure, anybody?
I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
Can we postpone the sale of the property until the next meeting in January to give time to equity to meet with our police chief and fire chief and city manager to work on a public safety complex deal?
Second.
The first meeting in January.
January 9.
January 9.
The second.
We have a second motion by Councilmember Matheny. We had a second by Mr. Askew. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Have a look tonight.
Motion carried 5-0.
Finally, brings us to council action number one.
Resolution number 2019-255R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud approving the purchase of 219.44 plus and minus acres of certain real, real property known as Hastings Ranch and Farm from George M. Hastings as trustee of George M. Hastings Family Trust and Mary D. Hastings as trustee of the Mary D. Hastings Family Trust for $5,750,000, and authorizing the mayor and city manager to perform all acts necessary and appropriate to close on the property as provided herein.
Good evening, Stephanie Holt Camp Parks and Recreation Director. So the item in front of you, this, this evening is a, is a contract for the Hastings Ranch and Farm, for the mayor to execute the contract for the due diligence on the property. The price is $5,750,000, $50,000 earnest money at deposit, 180-day inspection period, $50,000 additional deposit upon inspection period expiration. Deposits are non-refundable after the inspection period, and we would have to close 90 days after the inspection period expires. I can, I can try to answer any of your questions.
Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If you recall, council gave me directions several months ago to negotiate with Mr. Hastings to purchase this property as a passive park. It is part of our parks master plan, and it's an underserved area of both the city and the county. We are currently in negotiations with Orlando Utilities Commission for them to outright purchase this property and then give it to the city in lieu, and, and including a extension to their utility agreement that we have right now. I've asked, I actually had lunch with their CEO last week, and I've asked that they be ready to present this to their board and our board by February. So this is actually a cash deal. There's no other contingency to it, except I would say my advice is to, if, you know, OUC can fund the allocation for this, and I think we should move forward with it. If not, we'd have to come back and discuss other options. Spoken with the finance director, we feel that there's no other viable option right now. But we can certainly talk about that if the OUC transaction doesn't work out.
Do you have anything else, Stephanie?
Yeah, and then just so, I know we had talked about grants before, and I'm still in the process of applying for the one grant that's due at the end of January, so it's a $400,000 grant.
Thanks. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Mr. Meisner, I believe, I, you have a request?
Or whatever.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, David Meisner, Stevens Plantation. I took a look at the agreement you have, and I have some concerns about it. Even if OUC buys the property, you have a leaseback arrangement. And it's my understanding that that leaseback arrangement is very beneficial to Hastings Farm.
That's not in this agreement. I know what version you're looking at, but that's not in the lease.
That's a different agreement.
That was an original offer from the, from the, from the seller, and staff was not recommending that.
Okay, thank you very much, because the version I had did have a dollar a year, which I thought was a little low. My concern also is if we, we have this park for 200 acres, you have a budget problem now. Are you going to be able to fund the operations of a park of that size in the next couple of years? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item from the audience? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. A couple of questions first. What is the nature of the discussion with OUC? So they're going to, let me see if I paraphrase what I understood. They're going to buy the land outright and give it to us in exchange for an extension of their existing 30-year agreement with the city. Is that true?
That's correct.
How, how many years extension are they asking for?
That's still under negotiation, because there's another part of the contract that I don't want to talk about right now, that will come forward in February.
Another thing that they're offering to help us with?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so here's my, I guess, my question. We've had a 30-year contract with OUC, and I don't, how many, how many of the council members have read that contract? Oh, how many pages? 300 pages. Okay, 300. I've read them.
Ma'am, that contract is not 300 pages.
With amendments, and I, 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 okay, you can correct me if you, if you want to, but with amendments, it's pretty close to it, because I've got a copy of it. So the question I have is, we've had a 30-year contract. OUC gets A and the city gets B, whatever those terms have been for 30 years. So 30 years is a very long time. And what would happen if we don't extend OUC's contract for, for these various incentives that they're offering? At the end of that contract, we would renegotiate with OUC? Would it be open to other companies like Duke Energy or anybody else? Mr. Menzares?
Do you have any other questions, ma'am? You need to talk to me, please.
Talk to you?
Yes, ma'am, to the council, the whole council, not just.
Okay, fine. Do you have, at the end of that contract period, will other bidders be allowed to bid?
Okay, do you have any other questions?
Sure, I'd like to hear the answer first.
Do you have any other questions, ma'am?
Depends on the answer I get.
Mr. Menzares?
The current contract provides, has a provision in it that the end of the contract, the city would essentially have to buy out OUC for its investment into the electric utility system. Essentially, so we'd have to buy it out for its investment in there. Historically, how this has worked out is if you went to that, that point, the city would either decide it's going to go back into the electric utility business, we still own the utility. You can decide at any point, or the council at the time can decide at any point, that it wants to run the utility itself, recreate its electric utility department, and, but it would have to pay this, the, the OUC the fair market value of the electric system, the infrastructure that's been placed in it. If you, at that point, if that was the direction of the city at the time, you could ask for other electric utility companies to come in and basically fund the buyout of OUC, which is the other option that other, has happened in similar agreement, similar situations in the state of Florida. And some, somebody like Duke or any other electric utility provider could come in and essentially take over the operation of the system and fund the buyout of OUC's infrastructure.
But I just want to make sure you point out that this is a management contract that we have with OUC.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, that's a good point out.
Right.
Thank you. So when you're entering into discussion, Mr. Sturgeon, with OUC about extensions, do you have a value that you place, a numeric dollar value that you placed on each year of extension? In other words, if they're offering us incentives for something, that has a value?
That's still under negotiation.
What is the value that you've used or in your ballpark figure? That you, do you have something in mind, is what I'm asking?
Yes, but like I said, we're still in negotiations.
Yeah, I know you don't want to disclose it yet, but I would be very interested in knowing what that number is and how it was determined, okay, to decide if we are getting fair value for it and we don't have another, you know, undervalued thing that we're giving away. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So the city manager and I had a conversation about this a week or so ago, because I don't really know the value of a utility and what the contract extension value is actually worth. I have no idea, you know, and I don't know that we as a city know. And so one of the things I was talking with the city manager about was, are there consultants that we could bring on board to help us negotiate and know what the value is so that we are making a good negotiation? So I don't know if you've moved forward with that, or do you need direction from council? But that was something he and I discussed a couple of weeks ago.
So I went to my utilities director, who knows a lot about utilities, and we've working, looking for a company to do that. I asked for a financial analysis of our contract with OUC. So we'll move forward with that. And like I said, we did discuss that, and I thought it was a good idea. And I'm taking that, it is my decision to do that and bring that back to the council and say, yeah, this is a good contract.
So have you, have you?
We haven't.
Contracted with a consultant?
We have not yet, no. I'll be bringing that back to the council.
So this is very, very preliminary stuff that we're doing?
That's correct.
Very, very.
So do you think you'll be able to hire the consultant and figure that out in that 180-day inspection period time?
Yeah. Based on the analysis during our water utility, it's going to be shaving a peach. It's going to be tough. It's going to be, you have to get the bid process, I mean. This is going to be tough. But if I could just correct myself, I said passive park. It's a park. I misspoke. It's not just a passive park, it's got other amenities also that could generate income for the city. It has a wedding venue that's got contracts for the next year. So there's a possibility of revenue to fund the operations of the, of the park.
Okay. Mr. Menzares?
Yeah, and if the, if the council, following what Mr. Sturgeon has suggested, is inclined to move forward with the idea that we're going to go through this, you're going to go through this process of figuring out what the value of an extension of the OUC deal is in exchange for this, I would suggest to you that 180 days is not a long enough inspection, inspection period. So you may want to, again, this is an offer from, you know, a seller to it. We've been working on it. If, I would suggest that you add at least another three months onto that, maybe go to 270 days as an inspection period. And, you know, so, and then see how, and see how the seller reacts to that.
Mr. Hastings isn't here, is he?
He was earlier, I think.
It's a pleasure to the council. Councilmember Trace?
So, yeah, discussion about this turned into an OUC discussion, but it's 139 pages, the one I have with the two amendments to it. But, so my comments about the Hastings property are the same from our council workshop on November 7th. It's a beautiful property. Tour it, I've been to many weddings there. But if we've had $6 million laying around, I think we could spend it better than on this property. It's a nice to have, not a need to have. And really, before we make any fiscal decisions like this, I really want to know the impact of what cost it would take to upgrade the facility for ADA, fire sprinklers, for a commercial building, anything like that, and then also operation and maintenance of the facility, those costs. So I just think it's a bit of a square, especially with the OUC item that's getting kind of mixed up in this. I think it's a bit of a square peg, round hole situation, and not really the, the right time to move forward with something like this.
Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve, but I want to extend the inspection period to 270 days.
I second that, and I was thinking the same thing that you did.
I think in that time, we can figure out OUC, we can figure out the maintenance costs, we could do all those things within that timeframe, yeah.
Can you do it?
Okay, we have a motion to approve with extending it to 270 days. Yes, Mr. Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you. Deputy Mayor, could I indulge you to add to your motion that we do a financial analysis? that we do a financial analysis for the OUC contract that's included in this decision process?
Sure, I'll make that amendment.
At what kind of cost? Just a ballpark?
He just wants direction to go get?
Okay.
Yeah, go get. Yes.
Yeah. Sure, I'll amend it.
Any further discussion from council?
May.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
May.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
I have number two.
Discussion and possible action regarding appointment to committee vacancies for Parks and Recs and zoning board of adjustment.
Which one are we going to first? First, we have the Parks and Recreation Committee. We have a vacancy for the at-large appointment for alternate number two. And we have two applicants. They're new applicants, Robert Longbottom and Julian Gilmore.
Have any discussion from council?
I don't know either the campus, do you? Isn't Robert Longbottom a pastor at St. Luke's Church?
He's a good man. I make a motion we appoint Robert Longbottom to the alternate two vacant position.
Second.
There you go. We have two seconds. Councilmember Matheny? Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, so the next committee we have is a zoning board of adjustments committee. We have a vacant position in seat number five. We have two current alternates that would like to move forward to be a full member. That's Dan Hartwick and David Meisner. And then the two applicants that are new are Robert Longbottom and Julian Gilmore.
Seat number five?
It's seat five.
Two, ma'am.
So I'd like to make a motion to move Dan Hartwick to seat five and appoint Julian to the alternate spot.
Second.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Bring us some item F that was moved from the consent agenda. Could you please read?
Resolution number 2019-248R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the sole source procurement of ice pigging domestic water mains from Utility Service Company, Inc., as, and providing an effective date.
Good evening. Nice item to close out the agenda with. So as the-
Could you give us your name for the record, please?
Oh, sure. Brian Hoyer, you're environmental, you're interim environmental utilities.
Thank you, Brian.
Make sure you understand that interim name in there. So the council's well aware, as we've been dealing with over the past several years, the colored water and sediment in the water lines as a result of the problems at the water plant number four with the myex resin loss. And even though we've got the loss of resin under control, there's, over the years, the resin that got deposited in the water lines has continued to create aesthetic problems for the customers. We've been doing unidirectional flushing now since starting in August. And I think we're making some progress, but to get to the point of actually getting the lines cleared, we were looking at some technology that's actually been developed in Europe that, well, I think will actually clear out some lines completely. It's called ice pigging. This came to my attention, actually, I had to give Councilman Trace and I kind of stumbled upon this almost simultaneously. I got a notice of a seminar by the Forest Section American Waterworks Association. That same day, I got an email from Councilman Trace saying, I heard from Orange County that there's such a thing as ice pigging. He thought it was a joke, but it was a reality. It was, in fact, reality. I contacted the utility people at Orange County. They had used ice pigging, I think, in the last year. They have a development, somebody may be familiar with the geographic, or it's called the Williamsburg area of Orange County, over near the Seawater area. They had had a water system there that had deposited sulfur compounds over the years, and it created a lot of taste and odor problems in the system, and they'd done different things to try to correct that. They came in and had this company do the ice pigging and told me that the problems are gone. They completely cleared the lines out. They were surprised at how much debris they got out of the lines. I contacted Utility Services, which is actually a division of the largest international utility company in the world, Suez, which has developed this technology and has been discussing with them, worked out a proposal for them to do basically seven of the subdivisions where we have the highest level of complaint, which are primarily located between Old Canoe Creek Road and Canoe Creek Road. And there, and there's about, overall, they'd be doing about 27 and a half miles of water line for this, for this price. It's, as I've told people, it's like putting a slushy into the water, into the water line. It basically coats the line, pushes everything, everything that's debris-wise in the line out, leave a clean pipe. If you want to get into the actual technical, more technical dis, if I don't misspeak, a couple of representatives from the company are in the audience, if you want to go through the complete scenario of how it's done. But it basically, it, by the ice, the slush type of ice going through it, coating the whole pipe, moves everything that's in the pipe in front of it out, and will discharge it out of the pipe, and will leave you with essentially a clean pipe to start with, as far as that goes.
Would anyone from the company like to speak to this? This slushy deal?
Good evening. Tim McDaniel with Suez Environmental and Utility Service. Let me ask if you have some questions about how it works before I could, no?
How longevity, how long have you been doing it?
It's been developed in Europe probably about six years ago. And it was actually developed in a college that came in and took over a water, a water facility over there. And that's how they developed and used it and everything. We've been using it over here probably about four years. Done several, several cities. We use it on forest means and potable water. And essentially what it is, is it's ice machines that are, we make ice, we use your water. We use NSF-approved salt. It's just like making an ice cream. It goes in a fire hydrant. You block off and bleed out a little bit of water, get the slug in there. And then you open your pressure, and it just pushes through, and it-
Kind of like scraping you up.
It does. It takes everything, it takes everything out of there, yes.
And you've done several, several cities, you said?
Yes, we're, we have contracts with Ocala, Orange County, Daytona, Charlotte County. So we've done several down here, Myrtle Beach, pretty much all the way up the coast.
How long would it take you to do it?
Ooh, we're going to be in here 26, 28, 26 to 28 days.
Well, that's fairly fast, okay.
We make-
The citizens would see, they'd see a definite, definite change in the water.
In, in Orange County, not only did it clear up their colored water and their taste and odor problems, it also, it also took out all the sediment and everything, and they've been able to hold their residual now. They were leaving the plant with about a 2.0 at the end of the line. It was at .5. Now, at the end of the line, it's staying at about 1.5, 1.7. So it cleans up everything, removes the biofilm and everything else.
Citizens wouldn't see it, I mean, coming out of, at the end of the pipe?
Oh, you didn't, it discharges, it has to be discharged into a sanitary sewer.
But when you're doing that, wouldn't the offshoot of that carry some of that sediment, sediment and stuff like that? And then the gray matter, or whatever it is, pieces, particles, or whatever is going to come into your, anybody's? Yeah, into your pipes?
Oh, no, no. It is going to have to be set up and what to do. The daily runs and everything will take about an hour, two hours. So we door-tag everybody, let them know that we're doing it, ask them to not do any laundry, not use the water for about an hour, hour and a half. Yes. Now, if it, if it does happen, if you, they open their faucets, let it run for about four minutes, and it'll put it right out.
So all of the screen needs to be taken off and cleaned?
It would need to be, yes.
I got you. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Would anyone in from the audience like to speak to this issue?
Quick question. Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. Just a quick question. It sounds exciting. I'm looking forward to it. Does this include in the project the Pine Lake Estates problem? Is that going to be addressed? Pine Lake Estates, Brian? Because those folks are in, you know, desperate need of an improvement. Yeah, they are. Thank you so much. I'm sure they're excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this? Do we have a further discussion or a motion by council? Motion to approve.
Second.
Everybody. Motion for Councilmember Askew, second, by Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Mr. Menzares?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor, other than wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, mayor. First item is, as you know, the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee was set to sunset at 120 days. That's coming up on expiration. I'm asking for an extension of 45 days. They are in the final stages of making their recommendations. We've got a workshop scheduled with you, joint workshop with them, and the council on the 16th of January. I'm just asking for 45 days, because something happens, but we should have the final report for discussion with the council by the 16th.
Sure, absolutely.
Just a consensus.
Just a consensus.
Sure.
The second thing is, is on the November 21st meeting, we ask you, or actually, Councilmember Askew asked us about looking into alcohol used downtown, being able to walk around with it. Had the police chief do some background for me. He looked at City of Mount Dora, City of Eustis, and the City of Claremont, and made some recommendations. I think they're good recommendations. What we'd like to do, if I can get council direction, is amend the entertainment district ordinance. However, first, we're going to engage our bar owners and our downtown business owners in a discussion to find out what works best for the entertainment district, and then we'd like to run a six-month pilot program. And I can get into the details. I'll send them to you.
Sounds good to me.
Delaboring the point tonight.
Well, consensus?
We're good with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. And I do have a police public safety announcement I'd like you to show. It's called Lock It Up. If you can get it to run.
That's cute.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon. I thought you needed a little levity tonight after this evening, that's for sure.
Are you the grinch?
I think you're the grinch.
One of the, I'll never tell. One of our factors this time of year is the fact that we have so many potential thefts from cars and unlocked vehicles. And most of the time with our burglary rates, which we've reduced dramatically, is trying to get people simply to lock up their belongings, their cars, their garages, their homes, so that we don't have these kind of problems. So we make, we made this public safety announcement, and we're going to put it out all over social media, but we wanted to share that with you tonight. So, thank you.
Super cute.
Thank you.
With that, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
Well, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and one, one quick question. Bill, when could we get, we talked about it two or three times, and I think the council kind of was all enthused, all of us, I think, concurrency, the workshop, when could we do that?
I think what Mr. Trace talked about tonight, traffic impact analysis, I think that's exactly where we're going. Yes, sir. So we've got council direction to work on that. Once we do that, we'll come back and present it to council for discussion and final approval.
Did you give us some kind of a date?
It's more than just traffic, though, right?
Correct. We already have concurrency on our books for the City of St. Cloud. A lot of the roads that we've talked about are in the county, so we'd have to do an air local agreement with the county for-
Up in North Florida, they're doing it on a regular basis. I mean, day-to-day operation, and they've got three or four citizens that are helping to do it and get it done. Making a big, big, big changes, too. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon.
Councilman Askew?
I have nothing, mayor. Happy holidays to everybody, and thanks for sticking around.
Councilmember Trace?
Tomorrow's the employee holiday luncheon. I just want to thank all of staff for all the hard work they do all day, every year.
Councilmember Matheny?
The best for last. First of all, I want to thank staff for everything they did for the parade and the tree lighting. It was amazing again.
It was good.
It was really great. I don't even know how many people were at both events, but, I mean, it was packed again. One of the, one of the issues that I've talked to Ms. Holcamp about, but I just wanted to get everybody's consensus that you're interested in this path, so we have clear direction for them, is on the skate park that we have currently under design, we have two, like, semi-pro skateboarders in town that have offered to, or maybe they're professional, I don't know. They've been skateboarding as long as I've known them. But it's Eric Oakley and David Dalton, and they skate different kinds of parks. One of them does just ramps, and one of them does like city skating-type things. But they have offered to assist with our skate park design. And I did text them just to say, hey, I'm going to, if you're okay with it, I want to throw your name out there. So I want to make sure that we engage them actively, invite them to whatever they need to go to the public meetings, and, you know, really get them engaged in the process, because I don't really know anything about skateboarding. I want to make sure we have a good park. I know, Ms. Holcamp, I guess she left. She and I had-
I heard her.
She's out there. She and I have talked about that previously, but I just want to see if all of council was interested in that. Knock your head.
Yes.
Okay, we got direction?
Got it.
And then I just want to say, happy holidays and come out to our New Year's Eve party. It's going to be awesome.
Very good. Like to thank all of the citizens and businesses and churches that have supported Christmas for the kids. The distribution will be this coming Saturday at the Center for the Arts in Kissimmee. Several thousand kids have already been registered to, who will be receiving toys and gift certificates. And so the community has just been amazing. There'll also be another distribution at Hopkins Park. We have almost 200 kids that have signed up, and families that have signed up for that. Incredibly grateful to Lisa Tompkins and her leadership, and to all of our first responders who have been collecting toys and been a part of that, providing toys for the kids in our community. I'd also like to thank all of the staff for all the work that they have certainly done. The parade was awesome, and I just echo ditto for that. That was amazing. And then the tree lighting. And then the tree lighting, uh, just a lot of work, a lot of community support. With that, Friday, December 13th, there'll be an employee holiday luncheon. City offices will be closed from noon to 2:00 PM. Tuesday and Wednesday, December the 24th and the 25th, city officers will be closed for the Christmas holidays. Wednesday, January the 1st, city officers will be closed for the New Year holiday and remind everybody about Rock the Cloud. Thursday, uh, January the 9th, uh, in 2020, there will be a city council meeting at 6:30 PM here at City Hall Council Chambers. And with that, I wish everyone a blessed Merry Christmas. God bless you all. We have warrant list number three. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Almost.